It's like a CMT therapy. Up, we're live.
County Council meeting in order. Mr. Lot.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
President.
Mrs. Ferraro. Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present, Mrs. Ferraro by phone.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to prove the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Fargo Hefner, Mr. Myers, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, approved. Before we move on, I just wanted to say something. I think everybody's aware, saw the executives, what he had declared today and what he had to, and I just want to say in regards to that, that now that we're streaming live on YouTube, which is real happy about, I would ask that to those who are watching, if you're watching, to please stay safe and encourage family and friends to stay home. I would ask that you not come to public meetings if you don't have to, and also public gatherings. If you have any questions or concerns you wish to address with county council, you're free to call or email our office, and we will attend to what it is you're concerned about. You can visit the county website or the Facebook page for any updates, and we all have a shared responsibility to do what we can to protect each other, and I'm sure we'll, uh, we'll make it through everything just fine, but I just wanted to say that to any who may be watching this. I wouldn't know why, but if you are, please pass that on. All right, now we'll go to confirmation of appointments. Mr. McGee.
You're all by Northampton County Council. The following individuals have been confirmed and there shall be confirmed in their appointment re- or reappointment as indicated thereafter. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. Appointments Timothy Fisher and Eleanor O'Donnell, term to expire six thirty twenty-two. Parks Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board, a reappointment Pamela Kissler, Paul Ricardi, and Clyde Thomas, term to expire three nineteen two thousand twenty-two. This was discussed at the committee meeting last night, and all of these appointments and reappointments were moved to full council.
Any questions? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Got the by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, now we have courtesy of the floor. I have no one signed up. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address council? Seeing none, we'll move on to county executive report. Mr. Executive.
Mr. President, all my remarks revolve around the declaration. Would you prefer I wait till then to make them, or should I do them now?
No, that's fine, if that's what you wish to do.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now what we're going to do is we switch things up a little bit. I mean, you know, with what's going on, you have to lead by example, and we weren't going to have folks from the SNS come, but it's not a good time to have people in a steel tube at thirty thousand feet walking through airports, so they're not. But what we do have is Ms. Cozy is here, and she was going to bring one of the machines in. I don't know if we have them on the phone at all.
She's available, Brooke is available to call.
All right, well, I, all right, I mean, and this is really, we just wanted to get a sense of what they did and what's going on. If we have to call, we can call, but that may not be necessary. You can walk us through if there's any questions then.
Maybe. I can, just so I can roll around in front of them, just so they can see the ballot.
And also, just for councils' edification, I mean, these are next door, so I think you can always set something up with her and check things too, right? Okay. For the record, she put her thumbs up.
Oh, right, okay, sure.
What's going on? Oh, okay.
Lanta, you could sit here.
Why don't you sit in back seat?
So...
Well, they could all move up too.
How's an actual primary ballot loaded up here? I believe this is...
I would ask that we don't break these. Let's wait till she tells us what to do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to these whole looks in a bit, I know. It's fun to play with.
Yeah, it's like high school, everybody's grabbing at it.
One problem that I found, so we do have a ballot queued up, an actual ballot that will be used.
Super.
So, they're gonna put the, they, meaning the machine operators, not the voters this time around, this is a primary, are going to put the ballot in to activate the voting session. They're gonna be given the option of either Democrat or Republican. The machine operator will make that selection. They can choose their language option. This is about the city board. So, the ballot's gonna come up. This is the actual ballot. If this looks small to you, that's okay. We can make it bigger. So, this is the Republican primary ballot. You can go paginated, race by race, make your choices.
Oh, I've already came.
See, yeah. Here we got some time to get for the other day. This is from the Republican community. Here are all your selections. Everything looks good. This is a little bit longer than what the Democrat is. I can go through the Democrat.
Is, is that the size without setting it to a larger size? That's what they're gonna see. They said to hard, hard size.
What I'm gonna ask you then, would, because I'm sure a lot of them will, would you then, like, do it with the, um, with the size that'll be the default size then? Because that was, I'm sure most people that come will probably do that.
I wanted to show you before the ballot prints out that these will also be on all of the voting machines.
So there will be, like...
I don't know. We can ask.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, yeah.
Did ESNS provide those?
They did.
I got my light. I'm happy.
They didn't know if you're so differently abled to not have to do that. Or eyesight.
Oh, that light worked.
There you go.
Good.
Yeah, so it's very easy to read the ballot. This is actually fourteen size font, so everybody is saying it's so small. It's bigger than, you know, most...
Absolutely.
That you read in print.
Yeah.
So it is fairly large. It's very well lit now. You can cast your ballot. I'll show you what it looks like without going to the larger font. Every single screen has been touched and recalibrated. So, even if you go for that tiny little checkbox that you were hoping to have gone, you're not gonna have any problems.
So that checkbox isn't going?
Not until the general.
But if you hit anywhere...
The screen was not quick enough.
Anywhere in the box, the, the larger box, good, okay.
You hit a light tap anywhere, you're gonna get...
Super, that's good.
And if you hit the little box, it doesn't go next door.
This is the box? Spot on.
Size of your thumb.
Again, our lovely lights, we're very excited about. Very easy to read the ballot.
Amy, if I may, is there anyone from council who would like to push Amy's button there on her machine?
Been there.
Okay, um, I mean, because I know that was a question about sensitivity. Would anyone, I, I don't need to, but do you, anyone would personally?
I can show you what I walk my poll workers through.
Okay.
If somebody is having trouble with the screen for some reason whatsoever, I can show you exactly what it is.
Sure, go ahead.
So you'll notice if I go through and I make a bunch of light taps, everything is fine, okay? But if I go... Nothing's gonna happen, okay? All of my poll workers have instructed, if they hear any kind of sound...
Pounding.
...frustration or grunting coming from the poll, the privacy booth, the chances are that the voter is assaulting the screen at this point, and they should just yell, "Tap the name," because if they do that, they're gonna be able to hit it every time.
While you're doing this, I, I'm looking at who you voted for. Let's say you wanted to change your mind. You hit it, okay, and that's why it was last time, but I just wanted to see.
You don't even have, you don't have to do that. You can just...
Oh, you hit the next one.
You can't make a mistake because it's gonna block all the other names until you press...
Yeah, the only time that you're gonna have to uncheck something is if it's like a vote for two, like here's a vote for seven, so... So...
Okay.
I, I, it doesn't know which one I wanna not vote for, so that's when it's gonna ask you to uncheck.
If there's a, I mean, she's giving a presentation, but if there's a question as she's going, that you absolutely must ask, go ahead.
How did the, you got a couple of trial runs, and how did they go?
Uh, they went well. They went great. Uh, we just had our last poll worker training today, um, so every single judge and machine operator has been retrained on the machine. They're all happy. I am pleased to inform you that almost every single one of them reported that they had no problems at the polling occasion, that everything went terribly smoothly. But we went through everything, just as I did now, more in depth, open to close. They love the life, they're very excited about the life. So, um, yeah, everybody's, everything's going well.
Do we have enough poll workers now?
Yeah.
Now, we'll get into that, just with the machine. So, just so we're clear, you voted, you printed it, let's say, then the default, the next person coming will get that screen. It won't, like...
Yes.
So it always will default back to that.
You have to choose the big one. It's gonna default back to that. Now, mind you, in November, the general election, we only have five races, so the ballot's gonna...
Yes.
The boxes are gonna be much larger.
So, in the primary, there's gonna be two pages? Like, will all the races be on one screen?
They will all be on one screen unless this is too small for you, and then you can paginate it.
So every machine was recalibrated? Are you confident what they did and how the machine?
My name on the line.
All right, I... Oh, I'm sorry, but finish your question.
So if somebody makes the screen bigger, right, what happens to the runoff of selections? Does that go to another screen, another page?
It's paginated, so it goes race by race.
Why don't you, what's paginated, babe?
Race by race, so it'll only show you one race at a time.
Okay.
First, it's gonna be the president, then it's gonna be the attorney general, uh, the general, state treasurer, representative, et cetera, et cetera.
So it'll go to multiple pages then?
Yes. Every race will have its own page.
Until completely...
Also, coincidentally, that's what happens if you use the ADA device and automatically defaults to this.
Could you demonstrate a write-in vote? So I gotta vote in the Democratic primary, thank you.
Could be a lot worse.
When you review, so you review your selections, they all come up on the screen, everyone that you chose before you print it.
Yeah.
Even with all these selections, you're still not getting the ballot.
Okay, just so we're not walking over, but, um, were you finished, Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Okay, Mr., uh, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Myers.
Now that all the machines are fixed, Fargo, excuse me, now all the machines are fixed, do you want to explain how they realign to make sure all the cameras are working correctly? Since you gave me that briefing?
The, how they recalibrate the screen. So, um, when they go to calibrate the screen, what happens is four circles come up on the screen here. It's a very simple process. The four circles come up on the screen, and you have to touch right in the center of the circle. That's how it determines the alignment. So, for example, if you were going through a whole bunch of machines real fast and being a little sloppy and decided you didn't want to stand directly in front of the machine, you just reached over to touch the circles, and say you were off by maybe an eighth of an inch, you know, enough to hit the other box when selecting a candidate, that's how.
That was the problem.
And when they recalibrate, were you able to see the ones that, that weren't calibrated correctly? I mean, were you there when they did some of this?
Yeah, we were at the warehouse with them.
So you could actually see the ones that weren't calibrated, and when you fixed them, you could see that they worked, right?
Yep.
So does that, that means that someone could actually do it on staff now?
Oh, yeah, we know how to, we know how to, we should, had to be calibrated, but if we had to, yes.
That was, that was the reason why I would have pointed out. I was here the other day and had a chance to work to play with the machine myself, you know, and that's, that's the answer I got. So basically, what it boiled down to was not human error of our voters, but other manufacturers, people, so. If the public, if the president's here, make sure you understand that. It was not the voter's fault, but now we got it straightened out. I'm very comfortable with it.
No, I mean, and our goal was that they would take it and correct it, and apparently it would appear they've corrected it.
It was very, very simple.
Okay, good. Are there any questions on the machine so she can, before we get to general questions about the staffing on the day and that, I'd like her to be able to follow through on whatever her plan was. So I don't know, whatever you want to do next. An extra question.
Back to when you're voting, if you miss a race?
Yes.
Does it remind you or prompt you, like you were showing it already?
It does not, but when you print it out on the ballot, you'll see. It's very clear, and I think, in my opinion... A lot of the reason we're gonna see any spoiled ballots is because when you undervote a race... So I went through, maybe I thought I made all the selections. Anywhere I did it, no selection, no selection, no selection, no selection, no selection. It's gonna tell you the races very, very clearly under this amazing magnetic light that was happening. Where, where we missed things.
So can you go back?
I mean, I've got an envelope opener and some reading light.
Hey, a little means a lot when it's all you got, I mean, you know.
It has to be a fingerprint, right? It can't be a stylus?
No, it can be. It's, it's not heat sensitive. It's a laser screen, so you're breaking the plane or something. So actually, a lot of poll workers asked me if, like, gloves on, given the history, would they be able to vote? The answer is yes.
Which should, which...
Although I have found that a finger works better than a stylus.
Which gets into the thing of, since we're on the machine, what if somebody comes in? Is there a process for cleaning the screen?
We have a cleaning kit included in all the supply bags, and we are working on finding hand sanitizer.
Finding what?
Hand sanitizer.
Go ahead, go ahead. I just wanted to ask about cleaning.
So, could someone go back and recast a ballot because they realized they really wanted to vote for some, so quit?
They would hit quit.
And then what happens?
Judge elections has to come over.
And they have to get new paper.
We get new paper.
Yeah, they're gonna spoil the ballot, but I will show you, and this, I can show all the poll workers this as well. If a voter does quit voting for whatever reason, and the judge comes over to, to spoil the ballot, if they're walking away with it and the voter grabs them and says, "Hold on, I wanna see that," it's not unheard of. And they look at it, and as they're looking at it and holding it in their hand, they say, "Oh, you know what? Actually, I don't really wanna vote for any of those races anyway. This is totally fine." Okay. Let me just keep right back in. Those are the selections you made. It's gonna read your ballot.
Hold on, then catch your vote.
Just cast it.
Oh, okay.
So it sounds like the poll workers have to be a little bit more involved and somebody sort of dedicated to the machines. They can't be passive.
Um, yes, and that's why we did a lot of really intensive, small group trainings. I've been training our machine operators and our judges personally for the last three weeks on nights and weekends, um, and they have a great attitude about it. They get it. All the ones that are frustrated with some of the news attention from the machines, because they said, you know, they were really good about explaining how the machines work to their voters. It's important, you know, a polling place is only as good as their poll workers. So the, we have a lot of really great, dedicated people working in this county in our elections, and they're, they're fine saying, "Tap the screen." They're fine saying that you have to hit cast after the ballot prints. They're fine doing all of these things and explaining it to them. So, and the more they do that, and the more people get a couple cycles under their belt using the machine, I think we're gonna see things move very smoothly.
Okay, uh, if there's no ques, specific questions, you wanna go to what you wanted to do next, Amy?
So, in front of you, you have the poll book. Now, mind you, we have not even had our office training on these yet, uh, but I was able to upload a, uh, training demo on all of them.
Okay.
As you'll see, the keys are very, very sturdy.
How do we open it?
It's open. It's a magnet. It's a pretty powerful magnet. I just put it open.
Well, that is.
Oh. Yes, you can. We are in the wrong end.
That's, that's still.
Do that end. That, no, 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 no. The front, no, the other side. Hundred eighty degrees.
It's a strong magnet at the other side.
Yeah, yeah.
Press your home button. That's to make your screen come to life. Does everybody have this screen?
Hold it.
Yeah. So you get to this screen. It's gonna tell you, hit the home button again. Go ahead, do that. Hit for this screen.
Wait, what am I?
And hit that button that the arrow is pointing at.
What did I just do?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Hit, go ahead and hit the start button. It's gonna ask you to sign in. You can just put your name in. Everybody have their name in? Next screen is your password. The password is northampton twenty twenty, capital N.
For today, right?
For today. This is just a demo of voter rolls. There's nothing loaded on here. That's real. All right, go to unlock device. So this is a screen that your poll workers are all gonna start on, minus that orange button. I'm getting rid of it. It's just gonna be the yellow and green one.
Wait a minute.
I didn't get a password.
Some of us are, some of us are, the, I think that you lost some in northampton twenty twenty.
It didn't ask me for a password.
Oh, if you're, if it didn't ask you for a password, put, put your name.
How did I get to here?
So...
Yeah, so did I.
His did the same thing as mine.
I watch. See polling location. And that's what it's put in. So, that's why we need to know. Yeah, you gotta flip the screen.
So if I put it in hand...
Start all over again?
Name in. Hit cancel. Oh, cancel, okay.
Good.
I'm wrong. Hit cancel. Cancel.
Good?
Yeah.
Wait, where am I supposed to be?
Hit cancel.
It says start.
Yep.
We're going back to start.
That's where you wanna be. Everybody hit start.
Got it.
Hit start.
Hit start.
Good?
Hit start, got it.
Uh, so everybody's on this screen.
No, no.
Where are we? He told us to go back to the beginning and hit start. I press cancel. What do I do now? Yeah. Sorry, wait.
Put my name in? Did I do something wrong?
Cause it, it goes straight to...
They want us to pick a location.
Asking us to pull a location.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but we gotta get...
You gotta pick your ward.
Straight. Oh, I'll pick my ward. You have to know, oh, well, this is...
So this is a different training, uh, it's a different training database. They just gave us this one today.
Okay.
That's why. Sorry, guys.
That's okay.
They made it specific to Northampton County. This is exactly what it's gonna look like.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
You're gonna have the option to either manually, so you can just pick a precinct from that.
Oh, sorry.
I'm fourteen, uh...
Then this device is currently locked. It's start processing.
Unlocked.
No, you can put it in northampton twenty twenty with a capital N.
Northampton twenty twenty?
With a capital N. There you go.
Sorry, I just got Wi-Fi at five thirty.
Wait a minute.
I had to frantically look.
Okay, we got it. We can figure it out.
No, any precinct?
Yeah, and then hit continue.
You know what? That didn't take long to...
All right, now we're...
Yeah, they're, they're pretty into it. This is currently locked.
You need the password.
Yes, good.
This is the north...
Yes.
Capital?
Capital N.
Thank you.
Got it.
I won't, I won't high five you.
Got it.
You should be, Terry, can you...
I got it.
Manual.
If I figured it out.
Do you want this? I'll share with him.
I know, she got one.
So the example voters that I have now, that I'm seeing that they updated it, I'm not sure that the, uh, the voters they gave me are gonna work, but I do have sample voters here.
I can see it, don't worry.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Amy, I think the thing is, after you put your name in, the poll workers take over from there, correct?
Oh, you don't put your name in.
The, the poll worker puts their name in.
Yeah, yeah.
You're the poll worker right now.
Right, but I mean, when somebody walks up, you don't, you're gonna sign. Is there anything you're signing?
Here, here's a voter.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hoping that these are still the training voters.
But what if I'm on the wrong district?
It'll tell you.
I... All right. You're learning this as a poll worker, so let the lady talk.
So the manual, uh, the manual site, did the voter come up? Yeah?
Wrong voter, search again. Wrong location.
Okay, so...
What did she do?
I don't know what she did.
Redirect voter.
Oh, and it comes up? Yes. Okay, so Lori has an...
This is the hardest class I've ever taken.
Lori has an example of somebody came to the wrong polling location.
All right.
Okay? She looked them up. Every single voter in Northampton County is gonna be in here, so you'll know if you're at the wrong polling location, because your iPad is gonna give you an alert. Like, it just gave Lori, and it said, "Voter is in the wrong location."
So how we, just, we...
There's a redirect button, right?
Yep.
What did you do?
And it told me to take search.
I guess manual.
Oh, so are we supposed to put a manual search and put it in? Gotcha. And put the, put the new guy's name in.
Remember it's last name first.
Last name first.
And they can look at it. They can take a screenshot of it with their phone.
Oh, that's awesome.
Also, when we load the field voter rolls in, it will also have a map and driving direction.
Wrong location.
I got the wrong location.
No voters were found at that location.
So I wanna show you, I'm, I'm just gonna show you on this one, because I know that these voters are in here for these specific things.
Gotcha.
Yep, all right. I've got a voter. He's in white hole.
So the voters I gave you all have that QR code on it.
Yep.
That's gonna be just like it would be on a driver's license or an ID. So if you went to look it up using that green button that was on that first screen, you'll see on mine that the camera, and probably if yours, if you wanna back out of that, the camera comes up.
Where do you go back?
Oh, I get it.
They can take the QR code and scan it.
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot easier if you're not...
Holding, holding both things.
No, 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 way in front of the camera.
Where is the camera at?
Yep, so...
So it tells them where to go. Tells them what place to go, what location.
Redirect voter. If you hit redirect voter, you can flip the screen over. Just, just push it, yep. Hit that toggle button right next to those numbers there. See the blue toggle button? Uh, down, not that one. You can flip it backwards.
Yep, yep.
No, I don't worry.
Hit that button right there.
I'm doing what she's giving me.
There. So now it faces them. When you flip it around... When you flip it around...
So you gotta get used to doing this.
Wanna hit redirect voter first?
Yeah.
I think I did exactly what I'm supposed to do.
Redirect, redirect voter and this comes up then, boy.
There you go.
That matches exactly with this.
So...
I did this.
I just wanna ask her then. Alright, so I did exactly what this is, right? Same address and everything.
And they can see what I'm doing now.
Hit redirect voter.
Redirect voter.
And see that little toggle switch, the blue one, hit that? And flip the screen over to show the voter where this thing to go.
Oh, man, I'll tell you.
Watch my screen, don't, don't, don't.
Thank you very much.
So, a couple of the other alerts that will come up when you look at voters now will also be voter, uh... Voter applied for absentee or mail-in ballot, only eligible to vote conditionally. Does not give the poll workers an option of even signing them in or voting on this machine. Okay, that's what's gonna stop people who apply for a mail-in ballot from voting twice. Uh, if they apply for a mail-in ballot and they sent their mail-in ballot in, it will also alert you to that. It will say, this voter has already voted, move on to the next voter.
So if they got a mail-in ballot, they will get a provisional, they will not, because we've been trapped...
You cannot cancel out your absentee or mail-in ballots anymore.
So even if they didn't vote?
Once you apply, you have just given up your right to vote on this machine.
Okay, so regard these...
Once you apply, like you're...
Once you apply, yep. You don't have to send the ballot, cause you can, you'll have a voter, I'm sure, who will come in and say, well, I lost the ballot, or I never sent it in, or I think it got lost in the mail. That may be the case, but that's when they have to vote conditionally. They cannot vote on this machine because there's nothing stopping them voting here, turning around, driving here, and dropping off that ballot.
So, and this'll tell you if they voted or if they got a...
It's gonna, it's, it's gonna be up to date, we're going to do our last upload the Friday before the election. We're gonna have every registered voter in there, we're gonna have every single person who's applied for a ballot, and we'll probably have ninety percent of the people who turned in a ballot updated in this database.
I like your, uh, the screen there, it's like showing your feet, I think.
Uh, probably the camera.
The camera.
No, that's more tech than we have up here.
You said ninety percent? You said ninety percent, oh, say that again, ninety percent?
Ninety percent of the people that turned in their ballot will, will know about it, in here. We can't know all of it, obviously, since they can still turn in ballots in the APM election day.
But we will have a hundred percent of people that took a mail-in ballot.
One hundred percent, yes.
Ninety percent that voted because they can turn it in, so it's perfect.
So, Amy, how did this, this training for the ePoll Book go with your thought?
We had, we had, I haven't even had my training yet.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I apologize.
I was surprised you had them tonight, but I'm glad you did.
You did a pretty good job.
I loaded all these today, an hour ago, so I'm sorry I didn't work out the...
You know what, Amy, let me just say, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought them, because we were normal, we were gonna do it at the next meeting, but we don't know, everything being fluid, I'm actually glad, even though we didn't get a chance, this was great, because now we, we see, and, uh, you know, so, great, I mean, yeah, once everybody knows what they're doing, I think it'll probably work fine.
Have to turn it off.
We've, we've been mentioning them and showing them during the machine training for judges and machine operators. They're very excited, they're especially excited about being able to redirect voters. About half of the calls that we get during the day on election day are because a voter is at the wrong polling location. So this is gonna speed that up.
So what about the data in the upper right-hand corner? The check-in logs, the totals, the update absentee, so how does that, that's obviously for the...
Alright.
So, right, they are very sturdy people.
These are military grade.
So, uh, right now you have your poll watchers who like to check in on that number list of voters that we used to do in annual polls, still doing it, but they used to have to put Republican or Democrat, because they like to check and see how many each party had voted. You can now just pull those stats up on, uh...
Oh, wow. Includes spoils, includes provisionals.
They can verify it, but...
Oh, yeah, I mean, the, the, uh, party is gonna be there as far as that goes, but even your, the poll watchers throughout the day who are looking to get stats can get those very easily from the poll books.
Wow.
Just doubling back for one second with the machine, I'm just kinda curious, you know, if we get some construction workers out there voting, why doesn't it pick it up when you hit hard? Is that by design?
It doesn't pick it up when you hit hard, it doesn't pick it up when you spin hard and hang out there for several seconds. So, it's, it's calibrated so well now that you can have a heavy hand, you just can't, like, I don't know what you're trying to do with that one, but...
Hey, Kevin, tell your guys not everything's a hammer.
It was a heartbeat error. Oh, okay, and, um, I really want that. You said that it could show you the, the votes, like, the votes here, that's just the number of voters.
That's the number, right, so they had this loaded as, uh, we had, right?
Yeah, I saw that, I was looking for my poll.
You know what, it's, it's fine though.
It's two hundred thirty thousand voters, so ours will say two hundred ten thousand.
Right, but they won't be able to see how many Democrats voted, how many...
You will, there's a, a report log that you can get.
Oh, okay, so you go there.
You just push this button to turn it off?
Yeah, just like an iPad, there's a power button on the side, and I mean, it is an iPad, so...
Wow, this is a lot of fun.
Amy, question, I see mine says thirty-eight percent, how, how, what's the range of, of time that this can stay charged? Oh, they're gonna be plugged in, okay, ah, very nice. If there was, but, but it could, it, like you're doing now, it could operate without power for some reason.
Uh, it, it only has about an eight-hour battery life, which we all know election day lasts much longer than that.
Yeah.
So, uh, we did opt to get, uh, ten quick cords, we'll have power protect, uh, circuit protectors, uh, to keep them plugged in and make sure that we don't run out of battery.
What is the offer? The great name.
We hold it down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and to just re, restate, I mean, we got a chance to see how everything works, but, I mean, we're not gonna be working, the voter won't be working with these on election day. That's two glob, two tablets down.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The voter won't be working with these on, on, this is all for the poll workers.
They're gonna sign on here, but when they go to sign, uh, in...
Yeah.
All they're gonna see is a line and an X. They're not gonna see anybody else's name, they're not gonna see...
You don't have that screen that, where you sign?
Oh, he got cherry blossom.
The whole, the whole screen will just turn into a signature line.
Oh, and then you're gonna flip the tablet over.
When you flip back towards the inspector, puts it back towards themselves, that's when the signature comparison box will pop up. Uh, so none of that's gonna be on the screen when they...
And that's also then for cleaning, cause I'm sure the poll workers are gonna wanna clean.
Yeah.
Okay.
It needs the same cleaning fit that we use.
When a person moves to a new location.
Hold it, hold it, just a second, everyone is here. Carrie, have Carrie has a question.
When a person moves to, moves to a new location, he's got a sign, he's gonna have to show some sort of identification?
Yep, and that alert will also come up.
Okay, so I mean, I, any, are there any questions for the ePoll Book for what we got? I think that, uh, other than us possibly breaking two, I think that went well, and, uh, I wanna thank Amy now.
We are, we are looking to poll workers.
Well, I, I, you know what, Amy, that, that's a segue now into manpower. Where, first of all, where are we at right now with manpower?
We have lots of ePoll workers.
Is there a reason, or they just said no?
Well, yeah.
Corona, but, I mean, cause I mean, let's be honest, and, and I don't know how this works, this is a question that, I mean, we're gonna have questions, but I've been telling people that they should vote by mail for, for a few reasons. One is this coronavirus, which I think we have to take seriously, I don't, you know, despite what anybody says. And the other thing is that, given the ePoll Books and given the situation, you know, our machines, I think everything's gonna be fine, but the first time out, there probably could be some, especially like signing in and getting precincts. So, are you gonna be okay getting a flood of mail-in ballots?
We have already gotten a flood of mail-in ballots.
You need people to help, because you gotta scan them that same night, correct?
We cannot even open the envelopes until 8:00 P.M.
Are you gonna need help at the very least opening envelopes or something?
Well, uh, we did get an envelope opening machine that I am very, very excited about. It opens eighteen thousand envelopes an hour. So, that's gonna save us a lot of time, very excited. Um, we still have to open them up, pull them out, flatten them, and get them ready to scan. Uh, there's really not a quick way to do that. Um, we do have, uh, we've been fully staffed through today, including an addition of seven temp employees. We've been working diligently, we're all caught up, even though we are more than quadruple the amount of mail-in ballots that we had in 2016. We had a surge after, we did a mailer out to every, uh, registered voter in northampton county. We had a huge surge of applications after we did that, people were excited to learn that they were able to vote mail-in. Um, but we've been able to keep on top of it, now we just need our printers to be open.
Uh, what does that mean?
Uh, we just found out that Governor Wolf shut down all non-essential businesses, which includes printers.
You're right, oh, mother.
Good thing we got them poll books on.
Wait, wait a minute, this is some, this is something different.
No, this is...
It just happened.
Printers are done.
We don't, we're not using poll books, but I mean, this is...
Yeah, but we use paper ballots.
Use paper ballots.
And envelopes.
Yeah, okay, oh.
We would've, but when we get the poll books, we would've had to be printing polls.
Amy, where are we at right now, how many ballots roughly are we, I mean, if people keep...
As, as of right now, we have processed six thousand mail-in ballot applications.
And we have a lot, I mean, do we, we have a, to go out, let's say you get six thousand more requests between now and the primary election day.
We, we still haven't received our envelopes to send ballots.
Is that part of the non, I, I mean, he's got a, he's got a primary coming up, he, he can't cut, shut down printers for the voting.
He did, he did. He shut down all construction jobs too.
I have, I, I did bring, uh, I brought a copy of, uh, of memo that York put together, Berks County also put it together, and several other counties, uh, in talking with some of the other registrars and directors from other counties. Um, we're really hoping that you guys will, uh, join us and the administration along with the other counties in urging our legislators and the governor to push back the date of the primary, because...
Agree with you a hundred percent.
We're, we're losing polling locations, we're losing poll workers with the loss of printers, uh, it, it's just, it's only getting worse every day. We've kept on top of it, uh, you know, like I said, we're, we've done everything that we're capable of doing at this point, but now we're leaning on the ability for the rest of the Commonwealth to function as normal, which we all know is not happening right now. Um, so, I do have a copy of the letter that the, the York Commissioner sent, um, to, to push back the primary.
Now, we'll take a look at that, and I would say that with CCAP, and I'm gonna segue to Mr. Kusick.
Yes, CCAP sent a letter also.
If they wanna do something, they, they really, we really gotta get this primary pushed back, there's no earthly reason...
We need a decision too, we can't keep waiting.
Not to have it a month later at the very least, Mr. Kusick?
Yeah, yesterday, uh, CCAP's Board of Directors had a conference call, and a recommendation was made to the governor and the legislature that the primary be postponed.
Yeah, yep.
I agree.
They, there's, there's a lot that we do leading up to it, and we can't keep finding new locations for polling locations and resending out voter registrations, I mean, there's, uh, we're, at this point, I've made the decision, uh, for my office that we're not making any more major decisions as far as polling locations and whatnot, because we think that that is the next step, that it's going to be delayed, we're just waiting for them to make that decision.
I agree, uh, Lori, Ms. Laura Hefner.
But I, I guess I'm doubling back to another question, that you said you are fully staffed, you have all the help you need, or is that like...
We, we are on top of everything that we are capable of doing, we are caught up on processing registrations, we're caught up on processing, uh, ballot applications, we have, like I said, today was our last day of, uh, machine operator and judge training, I've, they've all been retrained, uh, we did have the ePoll Book, uh, training set up at Northampton Community College, who just pulled out on us because they've closed all the colleges. Lehigh University was one of our largest polling locations that we just moved, they just pulled out on us because they closed the university. Um, so, things are happening that are out of our realm of, uh, you know, we, we just don't have control over it.
You know, that goes with, I had a couple people already say to me about, well, why would the county stop this or stop that? I mean, we're doing our essential services, nobody's stopping that. But at the same time, what you're pointing out is there are other things that help prop up the entire system, and we can only do so much, as you're saying, I mean, at the end of the day, if you don't have a printer to print the things, how do we get them out to the people? So, um, there's, there's no question that we need a lot of cooperation between the branches of government here, and hopefully we'll get it. But I mean, your letter, uh, we could do this in the form of a resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
And we, and we can, it sounds like it'll be unanimous, but we can get that, that sent out for you then.
I would appreciate the support.
Now, you, the staff...
Hold on, sorry.
Okay.
Can we adopt this verbiage and amend it to say what we wanna say so that we can get the ball rolling tonight?
We just, you just send the letter, telling them that this is, we support this.
Oh, so you don't have to...
We can, yeah, we can make a motion, and we don't have to reinvent it, I mean...
Well, the, all I'm asking is, can we get this done tonight, can we...
Yeah, you can do anything you want tonight.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, we can vote on it tonight, yes.
Thank you, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, um, she mentioned the staff, and I think you were talking about your staff, but we're still, at this point though, we're still at a shortage for the folks who would be out on election day.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's no surprise that a large percentage of our poll workers are, are elderly.
Elderly, no.
And they're scared, and they're nervous, and rightfully so, you know, the governor's telling them not to go outside, and...
It's a major concern I've had, because you're right, I mean, it's one thing for the machines, but this, this is a reason why, yeah, I mean, if you're, and I know, I, we vote, and we see most of the people working there are older, and I can understand, nobody can fault them for that, um, well...
They keep asking us, we, and, I keep telling them, as soon as we know, they'll know, so...
I really think they probably will push it back, if they're getting this much pressure, Mr. Kusick, they're getting pressure from all the counties, I would assume. I have a feeling he will, I don't know why he hasn't yet, but...
I would assume that it's a matter of first things first, and there's some other things that have to be taken care of, and I'm sure that's a little bit down the road.
But there is something in the legislature now about giving everybody a, a mail-in ballot, they were gonna...
I mean, they haven't, before, they shut down all the printers.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so... What we need is a reset, did anybody else have any other questions, Mr. Lot?
Printer at your house.
Yeah.
Print your own, yeah.
We just ordered more toner, so I don't know.
Mr. Lot?
Just one thing, I, I just wanna commend you on, on that letter that was sent out to all the residents of northampton county.
That was very good.
Excellent, it, it wasn't over complicated, it, you know, I, I just thought it was well laid out and explained these machines well, so I...
We're gonna, the backside of that mailer, where the one, two, three, four on how to vote, that's gonna be posted on the lid of every voting machine as well.
Perfect, education's important on new machines, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a comment.
Go right ahead.
What are the pay, pay workers, where they're, what is their pay, the poll worker?
The poll workers, we pay, we pay the state maximum, uh, judge of elections gets two hundred dollars for the day, the other poll workers get around one fifty, one seventy-five for the day.
I think that should be mentioned in the letter, you know? I mean, really.
It's a long day.
Long day.
Yeah, I think, I think they should pay them a little more. You might get people if you pay them.
I, I, I agree with you. I don't know.
Toilet box doesn't buy you much, especially, you know, it doesn't get you much toilet paper.
Bill.
Not these days, right?
Bill, I agree with you. I don't know if we want to overcomplicate the letter right now with money because I think the legis, I think we can get them to move it, but once you start putting dollars into it, then we get into the legislature.
It's a different letter for a different time.
Yeah, exactly. I would be, I'd be happy to send it with you if you want to put something together to give more money to people. But I think we should move on this. Are there any other questions for Ms. Cozy? Thank you, that was excellent. Mr. Myers.
I just want to compliment you on your confidence. Two days ago, you looked very frazzled. Today, you look very cool. So I want to compliment you on, are you comfortable, are you ready, you comfortable with what you're ready to do?
I am, I'm proud of my staff for staying on top of unprecedented absentee applications. They're doing a great job. They've, nobody has called out on me. They're all there with me. We're, you know, definitely breaking social distancing rules right now. But I'm really proud of my staff. We're all working hard, we're working diligently. I'm proud of the poll workers who showed up to trainings even though the governor's scaring the crap out of them. So, you know, I, I know that we're, at this point, we are doing everything that is within our capability to do. And that's, you know.
That's, that's all we tend to.
This is the new, new normal, I guess.
So at any point when, as we get close to it and you feel like you need more help, please contact the president.
Please contact the president.
I think she reports directly to Mr. Dertinger. We know where the chain goes and if there's a problem. But anyway, no, thank you. Is there any other questions? Thank you, Amy. I, I really appreciate what you did tonight and I'm going to let you go. We'll move on with the meeting, but thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Good luck. Oh, yeah, that'll be another broken one. Not that I'm aware of, anybody hiding one?
No, I just have.
No.
Trade it for toilet paper. All right, so anyway. Okay. Now what we're going to do is go to old business and I have the public hearing on the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the Northampton County Council authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to lease indoor space known as Blue Valley Farm Show Building, American Banker Road, Washington Township, Pennsylvania, from Blue Valley Show Incorporated, American Banker Road, Washington Township, Pennsylvania. And this was introduced, I believe, by Ms. Zirinsky and Mr. Myers. Any questions? We have public, anybody from the public that would like to address this? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferrari, Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, I have no other old business. Is there any other old business? Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. Consideration of a personnel request resolution. And Mr. McGee.
Resolution. It is, it is further, it is hereby resolved that the two full-time positions of special court masters dependency, pay grade RSGR 401A, salary $48,000 each, shall be eliminated in the court administration effective March 19th, 2020. It is further resolved that two full-time positions of special court masters divorce, pay grade RSGR 401A, salary $48,440 each, shall be eliminated in the court administration effective March 19th, 2020. It is further resolved that one full-time position of special court master, pay grade RSGR 01, 0401A, salary $48,440 shall be eliminated in the court administration effective March 19th, 2020. It is further resolved that one full-time position of domestic relations staff attorney, pay grade RSGR 501A, salary $39,497 shall be eliminated in the court administration effective March 19th, 2020. We discussed this last night. The administration had, had explained it in pretty good detail. We kind of understand what's going on here and this was moved through full council.
And we now have the court administrators in front of us. Jermaine, if there's, is there anything you want to say before anybody had any questions?
Any questions you have? I heard my presence was wanted tonight.
I, I think it was just.
I'm happy to come in and explain whatever, what we were doing and.
Thank you.
Questions you have, but I passed out the.
Hold on. I'm going to go to Ms. Vargo Hefner because she's been so patient tonight.
Thank you. Only because yesterday we had questions about like the process and if we eliminated, my question was if we eliminate these tonight, then is it a seamless transition to what you proposed to do? Because Mr. Barron led us to believe that you would be assuming their responsibilities as vendor contracts?
1099 contract, that's right.
And so there'll be a seamless transition and.
Transition. I spoke to all six attorneys. I gave them the order that you have in front of you and they also agreed that we had an obligation. We have to do this. It wasn't something we wanted to do, we have to do it. So they have to become vendors. And as you see, the reason is, is because our court does not have delineated divisions. So the attorneys can't appear before any of the judges because we don't have family court, criminal court, you know, civil court. Our judges do a gambit of everything. So these attorneys can't go in front of any of the judges. So once we showed them this, they understood. This came to our attention, Judge Corey and I, I brought it to Judge Corey. He saw an ethical opinion on it as well and it came back that we have to do this. So it's our obligation. And I appreciate Liz and Mr. Barron also doing the IRS template and, and making sure we are okay on that front. They did that and we did that in coordination together. They understood our position. I understand their position with the financial piece and that was what we had to do, so.
Mr. Lot.
Yes, Mr. Lot.
Mr. Green. I understand taking these employees of the county, part-time employees, making them 1099. I believe the IRS, it was explained to us yesterday quite a bit. You know, they have their own offices, they, they market. So I, I don't think there's any issue with flipping them from being a 1099 or rather a, a employee to 1099. My question to you was, this court, this decision came down in 2015.
Correct.
I'm wondering why this is happening now, number one. Number two, my understanding of this decision, and this is above my pay grade, so I'm, I'm asking. My, my, my understanding of this decision, it was a conflict of interest. How do you work for the judges and, and then go in front of the judges defending somebody? That was my understanding.
That is correct.
So if we are just changing their tax status, their positions don't really change. Way above my pay grade, but I don't know how you can say this changes the conflict of interest. I think a good lawyer is going to be back at Supreme Court, maybe. Above my pay grade, if you don't want to answer, that's fine, but I just want to put out there.
The Supreme Court answered it and that's why we got the opinion. If they're 1099, they're not considered an employee, okay? So they're not getting a W-2, they're not getting benefits. Now that they're 1099, the liabilities off the county, off the courts, they're independent contractor. So they're not an employee that can go before the court. And that's what the ethical opinion said.
I understand that.
It was above my pay grade, but that's why I figured it out and that's why I can give you that information and enlighten you now because I thought the same thing. They're doing the same job, but it's the status. It's the status of getting a W-2 and they were in the pension. That was another factor and now they're not, so.
You can see how that looks like you're just changing a label, but the job's the same. And it, not you personally, but they're changing a label.
I understand.
But basically they're doing the exact same thing. They're working for the judges and now they're going to work for a defendant. I know this is something that's way, way above and it'll be decided, probably, I just imagine it'll be decided, maybe decided again, but.
Well, they have to go to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court has that in front of you. This became, this came to our attention, Judge Corey and I, before our administration. It was before I was court administrator, before he was a president judge. It came to our attention because I had this information and I sent it to the ALPC and they said, you can't do that. So once they told me that, we had to change.
Was that in 2015 when this decision came down or that was?
2015, I found this out just recently. That's why we brought it to the attention of the employees that we had to make the change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does anybody have any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, if there are no other questions or discussion, I call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right, now we're going to go to the consideration of Northampton County Municipal Solid Waste Plan Revision Resolution. I believe that's you, Ms. Zirinsky.
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the 2020 Northampton County Municipal Solid Waste Management Plan Update is approved. The proper officers of the county are authorized and directed to take such actions and execute and deliver on behalf of the county such instruments as shall be necessary or appropriate to carry forth the 2020 plan. We discussed this already, so.
Any discussion, questions? Pretty much we do this a lot. Okay. Call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next we'll go to consideration of, oh, I'm sorry, that's my mistake. This was added. Consideration of Article 13 contracts. We have Vision Technologies first and then we have AI Engineers. Ms. Vargo Hefner, you want to start us?
We discussed this yesterday at Finance Committee and it's for a switch refresh hardware. Now therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Vision Technologies.
Okay. Discussion, questions? This was discussed, if not, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. And next we have AI Engineers, Ms. Vargo Hefner.
This is for replacement of Bridge Eight located in Williams Township. Now therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with AI Engineers.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? If not, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Yeah. Before we get to the last, the consideration and of the emergency declaration resolution and then Mr. McClure wants to speak as well. I'd like to first get this out of the way. I'd like to make a motion that we send out the County of York letter to the governor's office as part of a Northampton County resolution.
The state legislature.
Hold on a second. It's not going to be a resolution, it's going to be a letter sent to the legislative body?
Yes. But we, but with a copy to the governor.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, it's not going to be a resolution, it's going to be a letter.
Well, we could do a resolution, but I mean, or we could do a letter.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
All right. Yes, we're all in favor of it. I mean, what we can do is a resolution that authorizes the letter.
That authorizes the clerk to forward a letter on behalf of council adopting the letter from York.
Does that require us to have a public hearing?
No.
No.
It's a resolution.
Okay, it's a resolution. So then we could just do that all the time.
All right, no, no, we're not making them. Here, here's what I, I'm, I'm putting forth a resolution.
You make a motion and a second and have a vote on that, yes.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily need a resolution. You can do it by motion and second and vote. Sure.
Okay.
All right, what is the consensus of council? Do you want a resolution or do you want a letter? Either one is going to get the message across.
It doesn't matter to me as long as you state the adoption of the York letter because you said sending the York letter. So we're going to adopt the York letter or adapt it.
Well, I thought we're going to send the letter, changing it to the county, making it Northampton County, but using the wording. So we're not sending this, we're sending the same text, but put in Northampton County. We're not sending the York letter.
Right, right. It's going to be adapted.
But to do a resolution just to send, we say we're going to send a letter.
Well, hold on, all right. Counsel decides what counsel wants to do and here's what we'll do. Stop, timeout. Okay, here's what we're going to do. I, I'm going to make a resolution and I resolve that, here's my resolution, you can take it down. Whereas, whereas, whereas on March 6, 19th, 2020, the Northampton County Council reviewed the County of York's Eleshkin Task Force Letter that was sent to the Penn, to the Office of Governor, Pennsylvania Department of State, federal, state and local legislators. Therefore, we, the Northampton County Council, do agree, do agree and adopt the body and intent, the intent and the body of the letter on this day. Any problems, any concerns, any questions, any grammar?
Good to go.
I'm glad to hear that. All right, are you okay? You've got what we need. You want to read it? Go ahead.
No, no, just want to clarify that are we attaching a copy of that to the resolution?
No.
No, we're adopting.
You can attach it and send it with the resolution. All right. Yes, all right. Is everybody clear on what we're doing now?
Right.
All right. I introduced it. All right, let's call the roll.
I seconded it.
Seconded by.
I don't think you need to run us a resolution, but that's okay. All right, go ahead. Call the vote.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Lot. Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, all right. The wheels of county government will roll along now. Okay, let's, we'll go to a consideration of a declaration of disaster emergency resolution. Would you like to speak before we vote? Sir, I could offer that courtesy to you.
Thank you, sir. I intended to explain tonight why I've been taking the actions that I've been taking, why this is before you tonight and I'll do it very briefly because I don't think that my speech is as worthy of your time as any questions you may have for the Director of Emergency Management, Todd Weaver, who's here, for the Director of Corrections, Jim Castora, who's here, for our Director of Human Services, Sue Wondolowski, who's here, who's been intimately involved in all the decisions that have been made at Gracemont. and as you, as you can see, our Director of Nursing, Don Tiers Feldman, is here to answer any questions you have. So I'll try and be as brief as I can. Everything we've done in Northampton County up to this point tonight has been proactive. We've been preparing, not panicking. But unfortunately and soberingly, the first fatality from the novel COVID-19 virus occurred amongst one of our own, and this brought home to me, first of all, a great, a great sadness for the family. We're very sorry. We send our condolences for their profound loss, but more importantly, it has emphasized why we have had to take the actions that we've taken to this point, and why I'm going to ask you tonight to adopt the emergency declaration and move it forward into the future. It will expire on the seventh day after I issue it if counsel does not adopt it tonight. And if you don't adopt it tonight, it will take, and you know, Todd can talk to you about this, Don can talk to you about this a little bit, it will take some of the ability we have to save people's lives out of our hands. It'll slow down the procurement process for PPE, PPE, or personal protective equipment. And counsel, I can't emphasize this enough, and if you want to make resolutions and motions and send them to Harrisburg and Washington, we need masks, we need N95 masks, we need surgical masks. A wave is coming for us. It's, it's coming for us. You can see it now, it's cresting, and imagine yourself standing in the shore, and you can't quite tell how big that wave is, you can't quite tell if you're going to be able to get under it, or if it's going to roll you around, and it's coming. This wave is coming, and we don't have enough personal protective equipment. We don't. So if you want to scream from the rooftops about something, please scream about that, it's very important. So what did we do when we were preparing and not panicking? We immediately, as soon as we knew we could, we shut the prison down to visitors and volunteers. We did that to try and keep COVID-19 out of the prison as long as possible. We thought if we bent our own curve, less people would get sick, and we're still working on that today, and as a matter of fact, today, yesterday it was, Director Castora can illuminate you further on this, we, we've ended all visitation from the outside, including other programs like the LEAP program. Nobody is coming in or out of that place that shouldn't be coming in or out of that place, it's almost completely locked down. Gracemonte, the day after that, the day after we shut the prison down, we shut Gracemonte down to visitors and volunteers, and this was very difficult to do, because the, the folks who live at Gracemonte have the right to be visited, and how heartbreaking it is for the families of the people who are living there not to be able to visit their loved ones. But Gracemonte's done some really cool stuff, including getting tablets so they're, they can face time with their loved ones, but that's not, that, that's not a replacement for being able to see your loved one, but people understand they need to keep the virus out of there, because as we've seen from Washington, the nursing home in Washington, long-term care facilities are very vulnerable to this novel virus. We've never, we've never had it before. There's no herd immunity, so we're doing everything we can at Gracemonte to protect, to protect our residents and our employees, by the way. That's why I'm so concerned about the PPE or the personal protective equipment. I've been on the phone and emailing and texting, begging federal, state officials, find us PPE, we're, we're calling our friends in the trade unions, and we're calling our friends in construction, trying to find these masks. Also at Gracemonte, we are, and Don can, Don can tell you how this actually works, but we're preparing isolation. We'll have 12, I believe, 12 available beds tomorrow for isolation, and we hope to have 24 isolation beds within the next two weeks, so that if and when we have positives, and counsel, I'm praying we don't, but it's only a matter of time until we do have positives in Gracemonte, and I think that the isolation will be very important for the health and safety of the other residents at Gracemonte, but also for our employees. So that's going on. Counsel, we had a great plan, similar to the one Governor Cuomo was talking about in New York, reducing the workforce to 50%. Counsel, about one quarter to 30% of your workforce is currently working at home, telecommuting. The reason they're doing that is I wanted to ensure that we would have continuity of operations irrespective of how the wave breaks. If it's, if it's a three footer, if it's a six footer, if it's a 10 footer, I wanted to make sure payroll could continue to go out. I wanted to make sure we could continue to pay our bills to keep the lights on, so the county government in Northampton County would still operate. That's why there are any number of essential employees who can telecommute, telecommuting. We also have a number of other employees who did not have non-essential duties, but who are also at home. They're at home because we're practicing social distancing in Northampton County. We want to make sure we have as few folks available to this virus in our county government as possible. There are two important reasons for this. We care about the health of our employees, but if the folks who are essential and must be in our facilities get sick, we will have substitute employees. Almost all of our employees in the, in the Department of Human Services are telecommuting. Most of them have the capability to do that, and they are home doing their jobs. This is, what, how many, hundreds of people, 200 people?
No, it's over 200.
Yes, so you have 200 people who are at home already, and they're still doing their jobs. They're, they're working from home, they're being supervised. Sue is supervising her administrators, her administrators are supervising their supervisors, and we're making sure everybody's working. So there's no child that's going unseen because these folks are at home. There's no aging adult who might have an abuse allegation not being seen, and they're taking all the precautions they can take. But these folks are also home because they may need to be a reserve workforce. Counsel, we're planning for the worst-case scenario. We're praying for the best-case scenario, but we're planning for the worst, and we're trying to keep as many people healthy as possible. And why is that? Because when I first started talking to you, I started talking to you about our 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operations that will never close. Gracemonte will never close. The prison will never close, and 911, Mr. Weaver will tell you, they have to be there. They have to answer the call. They will never close. But there might come a time, if folks start getting sick in those operations, where we'll need to have folks go to Gracemonte to feed people. We might, God forbid, have to have someone trained very quickly to try and answer a call at 911. So we're preparing. I had a great plan in place. It was working up until yesterday. Yesterday, we were open for business in the courthouse, performing core county functions. Revenue was open, collecting tax receipts. Wills was open, issuing marriage certificates. The prathonatory was opening, doing passport applications. Deeds was opening, letting title searchers do their work. But unfortunately, because so many counties that are surround us are not open, folks from those other counties were coming here for marriage licenses. And for the prathonatory who processes the applications, we're getting a number of calls from residents of other counties asking us if we were processing applications for, I couldn't, the, the run on our courthouse hadn't started yet, but I needed to pump the brakes on the possibility that our social distancing plan would completely break down, and having our 50% or less workforce and all these other folks home would completely be overwhelmed if we were having all these other folks come in. So we pumped the brakes on it, and today we closed the courthouse to visitors, but for exceptional circumstances, one of them being PFAs. PFAs can come in. If you want to post bail to get somebody out of jail, you can come in and do that. So there are, you know, there are a number of exceptions to that, but the bottom line is in order for us to maintain our social distancing, 10, less than 10 people in the place, six feet apart, I had to close the doors today. We're going to try and figure out to get it, how to get it open as soon as we possibly can. We're investigating whether we can just permit county residents in. That could be tricky legally. We're investigating, the sheriff is investigating and has invested in thermometers. We might go that route and check on the folks coming in to see if they have temperatures and turning them away if they do. So we have a plan of action, we've been implementing a plan of action for a number of weeks, but like one of the great boxers said, everybody's got a plan until they get punched in the nose. Hey, come on. We've been punched in the nose. But I, I'm done talking. If you have any questions for any of the relevant experts, and, and I, of course, am here to answer any questions about any actions I've taken.
Before, yeah, I was going to say, if you want to ask the executive a question, I'm going to then go to Mr. Weaver, because he sort of sits at the tip with, of the arrow there that we're dealing, or spear, I guess we're trying to push back this virus issue. Are there any questions, though, for the executive? Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Someone brought up to me that quarterly taxes are due. Will there be a waiver? I guess they could certainly send them online, but they don't.
Revenue is working on a plan to deal with that, if we, if we're closed for an extended period of time.
Any other questions for Mr. McClure? Mr., go ahead, Ms. Myers.
First of all, we spoke last week, and what I'm hearing now, what I'm hearing from last week, it's like night and day, and I applaud you for the way you've handled the situation. I saw a wave coming a long time ago with, with this craziness. I'm glad to see that we are letting people work home. Are they understanding that they're on the clock for whatever time they're scheduled to, then they're not bugging out on us early, those that are sitting at home?
Absolutely, and you, if you would like, direct that question to Ms. Wondolowski, because I've been very clear with her, that they, that folks that are home and can work need to be working, Mr. Barron, too. So a lot of fiscal folks are home, and the fiscal folks are very important to keeping the lifeblood of the county flowing, because they do all the banking, they, you know, they're moving money around, it's, they're very important, and, and part of the reason why they're home, I'm not picking favorites here, they're home because if they stay well, the county keeps operating, and that's our job, continuity of operations, right? In, in a disaster, in an emergency, as this is, it's a health emergency, we, we have an obligation to have continuity of operations, and that's what I've been doing.
Mr. Lo.
This, this resolution that's proposed, is there a timeline on this?
30 days.
30 days.
And then I think we, I think it's appropriate we review it again.
I, I agree, I mean, I, for one, was not like, Carrie, I, up until probably a week and a half ago, I didn't really realize how serious this was, maybe because of some misinformation out there, I don't know, maybe because it never happened before, but, you know, I'm, labor is, and organized labor is something I hold dear to my heart, so by doing this resolution, we're basically giving you the ability to not use those contracts anymore as basically a temporary. So you can move people around, because we can't close the prison, we can't close 9/11, we can't close Gracemonte, so you need the ability, and, and so even though that's, it's tough pill to swallow, it's a pill we have to swallow, I feel. I also commend you on, on your, on your stances, on your moves that you made, you know, premature, or not premature, but in the past, moving forward. You know, I, I, I am scared at this point, like many people. There's many people that just lost their health insurance, just, you know, husband and wife with kids at home just lost their jobs, both of them, with no idea when it's going to come back. I just, I think the, the side effect of this virus is going to be brutal, you know, down the road, and I think this county, you know, is, is going to have its work cut out for them, but so, you know, anything we can do to curb it, I thought China was nuts when they, when they shut everybody down. I thought, wow, what a lousy country, but now I'm starting to realize the, the repercussions of this virus is something we've never seen before. I, they just shut down all construction, that's us, you know, they shut down all restaurants. I mean, that's, that's, you know, a, a large part of our whole economy, economy is people. I, I'm, anything you can do to, to help curb this in our county, I, I gotta support, and, you know, and if anything more we, I can personally do, I, I will, but we are, we are in, I feel, and I hope I'm dead wrong, but I feel, I went to 180 on this thing, you know, I feel we are, we have a real challenge as a community and a society, and we got, it's, it's time for us to step up and, and really start trying to take, take care of each other. Anyway, that's enough, thank you.
Counselman, I think that the hard part here is to try and balance the continuity of operations with the social distancing, right? And, and right now, the scale is leaning towards social distancing to flatten the curve of the spread of the virus, but we still have to maintain the continuity of operations. Back to your point about labor contracts, you are correct, the statute preserves everyone's constitutional rights, of course, they can never be stripped, but our directors and administrators know very well that we have excellent relationships with our bargaining units, and we continue to work with the representatives of the bargaining units to this day, but I'll tell you, if it comes down to somebody having to feed somebody at Gracemonte that has a job somewhere else, they're going. If some, if a senior citizen needs to be fed, and someone says it's not my job, they're doing it.
Mr. Myers.
Just, just one other comment. I am assuming that you're meeting with the 911 Task Force and PPA there on an hourly basis, or your, your constant communication with these folks?
I think Todd is.
I see him back there. So I'm assuming that's right.
More communication with me than he ever wanted to be. So, so the, 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 the non, the, the, the non-humorous answer is yes, sir. Constant contact, and I've told them all hours of the day and night.
Are there any other questions for Mr.?
If things change, are you going to keep us abreast as easily, as much as you allow to?
Yes, sir.
And let me just say, I've had a few conversations with the county executive in the past two weeks, so there has been some communication, I mean, and I think counsel, I think I've even, I've said to a few people who called me, being that he's the chief administrative officer in Home Rule Charter, this is the plan he's hired to do that, do these things, and we're, we're the governing body, and if you wonder, well, what's going on now, or the, best thing is to contact Mr. McClure directly, he has no problem with that, and that would probably be the best way for any council member to know exactly what's going on.
I would definitely cut out the middleman and just call me.
Exactly. Okay, if that's all for him, then I'm going to ask Mr. Weaver to come up. Thank you, Mr. McClure. Everybody, oh, we have new people, do you want to, not that you have to, but introduce yourself and your title.
I'm Todd Weaver, the Director for Emergency Management for Northampton County, and don't mind the water, I'm a little hoarse from being on conference calls left and right all day and all week, so.
Well, Todd, would you like to say a few things to us before you field any questions?
Basically, we started meeting, like Mr. McClure said, ahead of time, coming up with a plan, working on the continuity of operations plans for the county, and for each one of the 24/7 operations, what the plan is to keep things going, and as always, with anything, we always put a caveat on the end of the, at the bottom of those plans, they are, the things will change. It probably goes every other day that we may modify what we're doing at 911, and I'm sure Gracemonte modifies their plan, and now Mr. McClure got to modify his plan for here, so the great thing is we had a plan and, and we're working through that, you know, every day, you know, something is out there. The biggest thing is, you know, the COVID-19 is unknown, we're in unprecedented times where, where things are different, these are uncharted waters, so directives and changes from Department of Health, CDC come down, and we may have to modify our stance in, in what we're doing. One unique thing with this is, for our county, PA Department of Health is actually, and for the state, the lead agency in, in this response and dealing with it, where even at PMA level and at the county level, we are basically, at this point, a logistical support and, and putting those things into place that, that are going on in the county. Some of our, our biggest things that Mr. McClure talked about was personal protective equipment for responders, that's our number-one priority. Before this meeting, I was on with state logistics, working and getting some PPE from the National Street Gigi stockpile from CDC, so hopefully we'll be seeing those shortly, and we can distribute it where those agencies may be running low to help protect them out in the field. Hospitals, they're working through their hospital coalitions, and their resource requests get filtered through the county, but straight to the Department of Health, where they get their delivery and their, their PPE equipment directly through them, but with our assistance in vetting some of those requests. Everybody's seen the, the numbers, in Pennsylvania, as of 12 noon, was 185 cases. Unfortunately, we had one fatality in the county, and we have five confirmed cases as of this time, and those numbers are going to rise, they're, they're not going to, you know, drop on us, and the biggest thing is for us to be prepared to, to deal with that. I'm going to, you know, reiterate the stay comments, stay calm, stay home, stay safe. The more you do the social distancing, as much as it, you know, may not be fun, but for some fun, you know, you know, kind of do that social distancing, you know, and, and kind of flatten that curve, and, and the whole reason to flatten that curve is for these hospitals to build up surge capacity, to be able to take care of those that do get sick, and we can maybe ease into this. And by that time, if, you know, there is some relief, either through vaccine or other means, we will be ready to help the Department of Health with logistics, to setting up points of distribution or mass testing, depending on what comes down the pike by the next phone call with us. Our staff has pretty much been on this 24/7. We do get to go home and rest here or there, but, you know, a lot of them are working hard. I do have one individual working at home, just because he kind of got stuck at travel in the middle of this, so we figured you can stay away for a little bit, but you asked about the employees working home, we're probably working him harder than the rest, because, you know, we all think he's not doing anything at home, and he's like, he just gave me something. So we are tasking them, and actually, it is working well for us, so we know we kind of have that reserve guy out there for us, and hopefully he'll be returning shortly. Right now, just a little bit of numbers, 28 out of our 38 municipality has done disaster declarations. The same thing that, they'll have to go through the same process that Mr. McClure is with the county declarations. Local declarations only last for seven days by state statute, they need their council to, to pass a resolution to extend them farther. Typically, seven days is good when we're dealing with, you know, hurricanes, tornadoes, flooding, you know, by that time, we can get things back in order. Unfortunately, this is going to be a long haul, and even just working with our staff, it's kind of challenging, because with our plan at the center, we're kind of locked down, and we're, we're, you know, working it with ours, we're using some help from DCD and other departments in other different aspects that we may need here at the county in tasking them, so. Sorry if that was long.
All right, thank you. And let me ask you, are you directly in contact or get updates from the CDC, or does it pass through the state to you?
We deal with the Department of Health. So CDC, which is federal, will go to the PA Department of Health, and today I was on with Tom McGordy from our Preparedness Region that handles the Northeast.
Okay, so that's, that's the chain of command, and that's how it's working, and you did point something out, and I'm going to, with your questions, and I think you know probably as much as anybody sitting here right now, and I agree with everything that's been said, I mean, we're not, this isn't about media or pop, politics right now, it's, it's about reality and real life, and I was watching with dismay the kids on the beach in Florida, as I'm sure everybody was, and you can probably speak to this. I think it's important that while it may seem like an old person's disease, if you look at Europe and you look at Italy, and we're sadly, I agree with you, we're, we're heading in that direction, maybe we can mitigate it a bit if we're responsible, but anybody can get this, and it can end up serious, whether you're 30 or whether you're 80. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, yes, and actually, believe it or not, with my own family and son that may be working, we kind of reminded him that, yes, you're a healthy young adult, but you are going to be around older adults and could cause a problem there, you know, so.
And that's very important.
That's what we keep reminding, and again, this is an unknown virus, so right now, we're, we're only dealing with the short window of what we know about it, so, you know, things can change, and it always stays prudent to do that social distancing, no matter what, no matter the age.
Thank you. I know there's questions, all right, I'm going to, go ahead, Ms. Rinsky.
No, I just had a, so, we're supposed to social distance now, is there any indication that we're going to shelter in place soon, that that's going to move up?
I haven't got any indication, but I'm, I'm sure we're probably going to find out with the press releases and the statements from the, you know, the Governor, if that's the case.
How does that change what you need to do? Like, how, how has that?
Actually, how, how it may help us if they do it, what that may do is allow our responders that are dealing with everyday emergencies not navigating who's out there in the community that, that could have it or not, because that's, that's a huge issue for them is, you know, and, and, you know, they got families, too, so you kind of got to feel for them that they're out there on that front line. Plus, it's going to cut down on the actual spread of it, again, lowering that curve for the hospital and health networks to be able to handle that surge, or be able to even build up and open up some wings and add some extra bed capacity. add some extra bed capacities. There's a lot of out-of-the-box thinking going on, a lot of stuff through Department of Health with regulations relaxing. You know, unfortunately, with this, it's, it's not traditionally what we deal with, with the disasters, because it's in the Department of Health and them. There's a lot of stuff that, you know, we're not necessarily the first to get the information on, like, when we're dealing with tornadoes and hurricanes.
So my, my concern then is, how is it that you're able to, like, because you get calls anyway, right, for people with heart attacks and strokes and fires? And I just saw, you know, on 22 yesterday, there was an accident.
Yes.
So how has that complicated or strained your department in terms of being able to act or answer all these calls?
Right now, like I said, we're just at the beginning of it. Believe it or not, our, you know, this social distancing actually has helped us, because our, our average of 911 calls is actually down compared to last year at this moment.
Oh, okay.
So, so this is where this is helping at. So we know that, you know, we're, you know, people aren't out there. So that, let's just say, decreases the risk of an automobile accident. So now, we don't have maybe two people that went to the hospital taking up a bed there, or having those responders. So, you know, we, we kind of seen that, and I kind of watched the numbers, because, you know, when we started this, I was kind of curious. And as of today, when I talk to our deputy director of 911, that, you know, the numbers are down a little bit. They're not drastic, but we, they are still dealing with that everyday emergency. But if people are social distancing, it makes it easier to deal with that everyday emergency. And if we're not spreading around the virus, it keeps those responders still there for those everyday emergencies and not worrying about, you know, themselves becoming affected with this, that they have to quarantine.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to, before, if, if there's a need because of capacity, and I know we've heard a lot about that with beds and whatnot, that, that the military, they have the mass units and whatnot, and they're talking about that in New York. Now, they're not that we necessarily need it here. But who would be, would they be contacting you, or would they be going through, if, if that was, it became a need?
Any, any National Guard is authorized by the governor.
Through the state?
Straight by the governor.
But who, what, but they would, but who would be the county point person then that the state would talk to?
If we're interfacing with the National Guard, if there's something going on in the county and they need our assistance, we would be the interface.
Your department. That's right.
So if the National Guard is active, they give us a, a liaison officer that actually comes in. And we may even have other needs if they get activated to help task with other tasks that may be out there, helping hand out PPE, or even just, you know, moving patients or at hospital or something like that. So-
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's helpful for us-
They're at the governor's purview.
For all of us to understand how this could work, because you get questions. And just so we know, I believe, Mr. Myers, you had a-
I think one of you guys is in front of me.
Who, who?
No, I'm good. I just wanted to know, the testing, right? On your level, you don't have to give me a long answer, just a short answer in respect to time. And are you hearing anything about testing that, that's on your level, at a positive thing?
As in, as in that they're doing mass testing or looking at doing it?
Or just any testing?
There is testing. Actually, we actually push it out and publish it. We even send it to the, the local municipal managers and also the MCs, that the hospital networks right now are the ones that are kind of taking the lead in the Lehigh Valley.
Keep their people safe, because everybody's going there.
So if you go to Lehigh Valley Hospital Network, they have basically testing sites where people can go up. Biggest thing is, right now, they still kind of need a script for that. And also, St. Luke's Hospital, Eastern Hospital is doing that. You know, I believe other areas, I know there's some chatter of them doing some bigger testing sites at, at a state level. Once that, if that rolls to Northampton County, then we will actually help coordinate and logistics and setting up something like that when, when it comes to us.
They're going to be in your wheelhouse.
Yeah. Right now, they're kind of concentrating on those areas that are, the outbreaks are a little bit larger, which is Philly and Montgomery County and the other metropolitan areas.
Okay. Who, Mr. Lot?
Yeah. I was just wondering, and I'm sure it's going on, but we have good communication with our local hospitals. I mean, are we coordinating with them on game plans?
Yes, actually, every morning at 10:30, I'm on with the Northeast Hospi-, yeah, Northeast Healthcare Coalition, which is actually the hospital groups, all of the, all the hospitals for Northeast PA, extended care facilities. I know Gracemonte's on the, on the phone calls with that, Long Care, Hospice. And, you know, we kind of hear what's going on on their side of it. So then, we can kind of prep if there's any resource requests through us to assist them. But the, the hospital networks answer, you know, within their lane, straight to the Department of Health. But there are things that sometimes we have to help them with in logistics.
Perfect. Thank you. And, and the last thing really isn't directed so much to you, Todd, but more so the prison in Gracemonte. I realize we don't have tests, but it should be nice to be able to, you know, what are we doing when we're bringing new people into the prison? Are, are we quarantining them, or?
Well, we're going to, you know what, let me-
Okay, we'll hold that question.
Let's go through Todd, because there's questions. And then, I'm going to, and no, no offense to Mr. Serinski, I'm going to go to the, the Gracemonte Human Services next, and then we'll hit the prison. But if you want to, if there's something that happens, you want to come up, then fine. But I figured we'll just go right down the line. Mr. Myers.
I've heard it three, four times, and none of us has addressed it, so I'm going to address it. What is it that we can do to help you get PPE?
Like Mr. McClure said, you know, talk to legislators, help them, you know, make sure that the production and all that's there. It, it is a national shortage right now. The good thing is that they're releasing the, the National Strategic Stockpile, which is going to help give a little bit of relief. Again, with this disaster declaration, that gives us the ability, when we receive that PPE, to put it to the area of most need and allocate it where it needs to go. You know, if there's other industries are out-of-the-box thinking, and once in a while, we kind of have an open thinking session at work of, okay, you know, we need hand sanitizers, or let's think who actually, actually has it, and we don't realize they have it, because it's just something they have on their shelf. So, you know, we kind of look at some different ideas. So any thought of, you know, PPE for the responders and all that is very important, but also even the healthcare facility. So it is a big push. If they can release more of it, that would even be better. But, you know, you know, you are competing nationally now for, for some of those. And fortunately, our cases right now in Pennsylvania is only at, you know, the, the 185, but it's going to go up. But, you know, there's, there's others that have larger numbers at this point.
This is what we need nationally.
It's actually reported.
That's what makes us challenging. It's almost-
Mr. Myers, you still have-
-affecting everybody, every, every county, every, every state. And this is, you know, makes us fairly unique in, in dealing with this disaster.
This is a whole new ballgame. And, and, and I understand essential personnel, I understand a city inside a city, I understand the living environment 24/7 thing. I spent 25 years dealing with it. So on point with you, I'm, I'm all the way with you. Have we reached out, or is it possible to reach out to one of these, because we got the brewery? Maybe we can talk them into changing out, not making alcohol, maybe making sanitizer.
They are.
They are.
So how, how do we go in and Bogart some of that from them?
Actually, some of it's there. Some of the issue is when you're using that sanitizer in, in the healthcare and ad, it's not FDA approved. So if they have a medical director that says, "Hey, this is how they're making it," and approve it, then, then yeah, they can go ahead and use it. We have put out some of those as we got resource requests for hand sanitizers. You know, we gave them kind of the contact to some of those distilleries that are doing that, just for some, you know, and if they're good with using it, then at least it, it fits the need at the moment.
Carrie, I saw the article, and that they were delivering them to some places. And I would say, though, that the real, that the official hand sanitizers is go people like him. And we should probably get the knockoff ones as elected officials go in order of importance.
But if you're social distancing, hand washing-
Look at us.
Don't worry about that.
We're social distancing. Anyway, Mr. Myers.
I applaud you for the effort you're taking at this point. I did not think that three weeks ago, when we met, that we would be talking at this point right now.
Nope.
Quite shocked to my system, but in the same breath, I'm glad you guys have taken a approach to that. Sorry, Peg, if you couldn't hear me.
She's coughing.
My, my other question is for other members of staff.
Are you, are you done, Carrie? All right. Mr. Lot, you had a question?
No, I just asked Linda if we could get it through the phone.
Oh, let's hope not. Is this side of the room finished? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Mr. Lot asked my question, asked and answered my question about the hospital coalitions. I can't think of anything. Just thank you and keep them on the journey.
It's changing every day. So, like I said.
Yeah. I appreciate it. I mean, I feel, I feel good listening to how far ahead you have been and, and how responsive you've all been, and how well you're working together. Natropaths and people that do essential oils, they can make sanitizers. So find out the people that, that stockpiled all that stuff. Because somebody offered me one today. She goes, "I can make you a disinfectant." So-
And by the way, to remind everybody, good old soap is still considered the preference. I mean, it's-
Water and hand wash.
You know, I was in the one store and to get some, and all this stuff is gone, right? And, and the liquids, and a bunch of hand soaps, bar soaps were there. And it's sort of like, sometimes you go back to your roots, I mean, get some bar soap. Anyway, anybody else? You guys have anything at the end there? Want to make sure I got everybody? Todd, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess we can just let him leave then, and we got the others. And if you got to go back, and I did tell the executive, he said, "Well, where would you go if you have to help out?" And I said, "Well, send me over to Todd. I'll, I'll do what I can over there to help him out, if, if I'm still walking." But anyway, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you very much. Now, yeah. Now-
Put him on the phone.
This isn't offensive, I'm going to call, no offense to, to you, Ms. Serinski, but you, you have Ken Craft over there to pick up the slack. So, you know, you, I don't have to worry. But I do want to get up, Ms. Wondoloski and, and Dawn, if you guys want to come up and give us, if, if you'd like to give us a thumbnail.
Kenny's going to click him there?
Well, Kenny, Kenny's on the job. He's, he doesn't have to worry. But the thing is, you can, there you go. That was, that was good. I saw that. That was very good.
Not gripping it either.
I've been, you know, and it, don't do this, and, and it's constant. But anyway, look, is there anything you'd like to just say off the top, or just take questions?
We, we have, as Mr. McClure said, been working remotely from most folks since Monday late afternoon and Tuesday morning. And we have, each division and each unit within each division has figured out how they're going to have contact with their staff throughout the day. Probably have about 30 to 40 folks who are still working in the building, because either that's their preference, or their jobs do not allow them to work at home, clerical folks. There's, there's no work to be done at home. But we're spread out across three floors. And every day that I am there, I walk through the building to check on folks, and we're very spread out. So that part is good. You know, people are pulling together, and we've got some folks volunteering to help out wherever needed. I think we're just tired. And, you know, we're in it for the long haul. So in Human Services, we're just plugging away and trying to support Gracemonte as, as they prepare. So I'll let, if, if there's questions for me, I'll certainly answer them. Otherwise, I'll let Dawn-
Are there any questions for, and we do have, Dawn, go ahead.
Protective services, how are they operating remotely or on an as-needed basis, or especially with the elderly, but the other end as well?
So aging, one of the Protective Services workers is in the office, because that's her preference. The others are working remotely. They, pretty much every Department of Human Services at the state level has suspended certain guidelines. So they're not waiving things per se. But, for example, I found out, I think it was today, that aging, the Protective Services folks only have to go out to face-to-face, for face-to-face contact if there is serious physical or sexual abuse allegations, or sexual abuse, serious, physical or sexual, sexual abuse or sexual abuse allegations. Sorry, it's been a long wait. And so, and even then, there's a list of, you know, going through the questions of, has anybody been exposed? Has anybody tested positive? Before those folks ever even go out there. And they do have some very small supply of personal protective equipment should they need it. Thus far, knock on wood, they have not needed that. Children and youth, folks have hunkered down at home. Our Child Protective Services folks, it's the same deal. I mean, they still have to go out for new referrals. But there's a lot of things that are now being done via FaceTime or Skype. So just sort of like regular check-ins with families, as opposed to going to the home. So Office of Children, Youth and Families at the state level have, have relaxed some of those guidelines for now.
Your emergency numbers at Iris, it's still, everything's following?
Yep. And there are some folks in Iris in the office, and the rest are working remotely. And actually, I talked to Gary Rushman yesterday and today, and he said it's actually going very well. And not surprisingly, our children and youth calls are down, because schools, doctors, they're our biggest referrals, and we're not in school, which is a blessing and a curse, right? It's, it's helping us get through this time, but we know there's still things that are going on that we need to be dealing with. And, and so hopefully, when things go back to normal, we'll get those taken care of.
Sue, the thing I guess I want to ask then, and we're going to get questions to you, but from experience, it's the schools are shut, and everybody's, we've noticed this, it used to be in the past too, the doubt, the, for that, for what we're dealing with now, that's what we should be doing. The downside is that sometimes, that's when the cases of reported child abuse and neglect start to skyrocket, and mental health issues. Are we, we haven't noticed anything yet, but I mean, are we, you feel confident that for now, and you know what, I want to make it clear when I say you're confident. I'm not that confident what's going to happen tomorrow. We, we're trying to prepare, and that's what we're doing. As Mr. McClure had said, we're, we're preparing as best we can, but we're dealing with a moving target.
Sure.
So how do you feel about that?
You know, we don't have a crystal ball. We never will. So with schools not in session, we're going to get less calls, and we know there aren't necessarily less things happening. And my conversation with Gary Rushman this afternoon, actually on my way over here, was both of us being in agreement that calls are down now, and at some point, they will spike. And the longer all of us are isolated and quarantining, quarantining ourselves, you get stir crazy, and, and people are anxious and depressed already. So we do have significant concerns about folks with-
Okay.
Folks with mental illness, and folks who are otherwise are well, but it's a, it's a really challenging time.
All right. Lori had a follow-up that I jumped on. Go ahead.
Well, actually, but you brought it up. So in terms of if folks need to be hospitalized, are you interfacing with the networks to try to determine level of severity using other, because, because I assume you don't want people bombarding waiting rooms that are not?
Well, I think Norristown is closed for admissions, if I read that correctly.
In regards to mental health?
State hospital.
Yes.
Right, mental health. I, thank you. I assume you were talking about mental health. We had a handful of mental health commitments that we did today. If folks have to be hospitalized, they have to be hospitalized. But certainly, if we can avoid that at all costs, we would. And, and we would, of course, avoid that at all costs in a normal day anyway, and try to utilize other programs. But all of our mental health and drug and alcohol providers have, I think, for the most part, been given provisions to do telephone or, you know, Skype, Face, FaceTime kind of sessions, and allow providers to get payment for it. So there's, my hope actually is that it, that some of those things go well and, and change permanently after we're through this crisis, to be honest.
You might see some detox increases, because liquor stores are closed.
Yes. We've talked about our-
No joke, but-
People who are, you know, stockpiling, and that's how some folks cope. So we're going to have some drug and alcohol issues, too.
So they only, I had a question, just one about Gracemonte. I'm sure that's just a huge situation. But, so you mentioned-
Can we, can we hold and then just see if she, other, other than Gracemonte, if there's any-
Okay. I got, I'm done.
All right. Any que, Mr. Kusick?
Duh, one quick, one Meals on Wheels, is that program still functioning?
So it is. They've made some modifications with their volunteers, and I, I can't remember what they are, to be honest. But for example, our senior centers that are closed, for the seniors who can't get meals, and that's their only, the senior center was their only avenue to get a meal, we were able to register them for home-delivered meals, mostly Meals on Wheels. And we'll be utilizing our staff to assist us in those deliveries and do so with minimal to no contact, because most of them are at least able-bodied enough to open the door and bend down to pick up a, a package that, we ring the doorbell, leave on their doorstep, and walk back 10 feet to allow them to, to get that. So I think our senior center managers have been doing the deliveries for now. But next, starting next week, we will have to ask our, our other staff to help with that.
You finished, Ms. Kusick?
One of the critical tasks of, or, one of the things that Meals on Wheels volunteers perform is they check homes. So if they're knocking on doors and just leaving the package, right, of food, are they still able to check on the residents?
I, I volunteered last year one day to help deliver Meals on Wheels, and folks don't go into the homes. At least, maybe not, maybe that was just the driver I was with. But you knock, and you wait till the person comes to the door, of course, to say hello, and you give them their food. So we would be doing the same thing, but not physically handing them the food. In some instances, for staff that are comfortable with that, you know, that's okay. So folks generally, to my knowledge, for Meals on Wheels are not going into homes. Might you see into a home when a door is opened? Sure, potentially.
Mr. Lot? Mr. Law?
They are not going in-house, like you said, but they are instructed to wait, that they can see somebody's there. So to answer your question, they still are being checked on.
And that's what we would require of our folks as well, at least to make, to visually verify that folks, you know, are there answering the door and can even have a conversation. It doesn't, we don't have to be 100 feet away. We're just maybe 10 feet, so, yep.
Does Vicki still?
I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
It was, I think, in the paper or it was announced somewhere that Vicki was still looking for volunteers. Has she gotten all the volunteers that she needs? Does she need more?
I don't know the answer to that, but I would suspect she is probably always willing to have more volunteers. But I have not had direct contact with her.
Oh, okay.
I just think it needs to be said because, you know, I thank you for everything you do and thank you, you know, thank all the employees of this county that are stepping up. I mean, these are very unusual, difficult times. And I just feel like I have a bad feeling it's going to get a lot more difficult before they get better. So all the employees of the county that are stepping up and, you know, this is a community, you know, I'm sure I can speak for resident council. We're very thankful that we have good employees and so, whatever that's worth.
We have a lot of good employees and I am, I assure you, keeping track of those who have volunteered. And we have some that have gone above and beyond volunteering already. So I continue to express my appreciation every day. So thank you for that.
Before I go on to questions, I want to acknowledge something that all of us sitting around here maybe are just taking advantage of, that the folks that came in here before us decided to wipe all of our stuff down clean and make sure we're sanitized. We need to thank them. So please, Ms. McClure, let those folks know in this building that I truly appreciate what they're doing. My questions are going to be to you because I am quite happy with some of the things I'm hearing tonight. But I asked Mr. McClure earlier, and I ask you this. Are we making sure that some of our people aren't cheating us with their hours and not doing what they're supposed to? Are your supervisors, our supervisor on these guys to make sure that somebody doesn't punch out or decide to take? Well, I worked through lunch today and I'm just going to take off early. We're not allowing this to happen, correct?
Well, to the best of our ability, we are on top of people both at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day and certainly throughout the day. But obviously, we're not in their homes.
Right.
But folks, the supervisors know what work each person has and they know if it's being done or if it's not being done. Some of our folks have a little free time for sure on their hands, which is why we're going to reassign them to some other duties simply because some of the regulations have relaxed a little bit, limiting face-to-face contact. For example, early intervention evaluations are not being done at the moment. Our folks don't do the evaluations, but they attend them. So they, this is a great time for them to actually get caught up on a backlog of paperwork. But in addition to that, that's just one example of many of folks maybe having a spare hour or two every day that, yes, we will relegate them other places. So each division has, I've allowed each division to set up their own systems of supervision because what works for one does not necessarily work for the other. But it's not a free ride, you're correct.
Okay. And communications, as far as concerned, everybody's got cell phones, laptops that they need to do. So there's no excuse for somebody to come back, but no BS, correct?
Human Services has always been set up, well, I shouldn't say always. Since before I got here, they've always been set up to be able to operate remotely because they, technology allows them to do some work in the field in between appointments. So that was easy. We're probably the easiest folks to get remote in the county.
Okay. I have a tickle from my lemonade, so don't worry, folks, I'm not sick. We're good that way. It just hit the wrong white pipe. Hit the long, hit the wrong one pipe, that's all. As this thing's going to progress, and being a guy who's been involved in social personnel, we're going to be looking at a situation somewhere along the line that daycare is going to be shut down. And our employees are going to run into a problem. Have we, are we coming up with a game plan for something like that?
So daycares have shut down.
Yeah.
But many have applied for waivers to remain open for healthcare workers and first responders. So, for example, the YMCA has four locations that are opening, I think, next week sometime. It might be Monday even, but next week, for $100 a week. I was super impressed with that because that's less than half the going rate.
Absolutely.
And so that's just what we need right now. So we have that. But we also, the Department of Health had loosely suggested that we work on trying to come up with some makeshift daycare for long-term care staff. So we did offer that using volunteers from Human Services staff, and that is actually starting tomorrow. Most folks have, our first goal was to try to pair staff with other staff who needed childcare on opposite shifts. And so ultimately, we have five kiddos coming to the Human Services building tomorrow for impromptu daycare to ensure that the few folks who would not be able to work will be able to work. So I was.
We're bringing kids into our building?
Well, children are still coming into the building, not as often, but visits are court-ordered. Most of them are minimum of every two weeks. So most have not, most of them are going to telephone and things like that. But, for example, we have newborns. Maybe they're still needing to be bonding with birth parents.
Absolutely.
So, so yes, it is very minimal. And with so few people in the building, we're utilizing one conference room in particular and hope to spend a lot of time outdoors and have hand sanitizers and a big room to keep people six feet apart if they're not in the same family.
Okay, I'm liking what I'm hearing. And along with.
We did open that too, by the way, to, we were able to open that to Human Services folks because that was one of the initial concerns that they expressed when they were asked to volunteer. And to this point, we, some of our volunteers are bringing their children with them. But otherwise, being able to work remotely, people have been able to figure that out.
Okay, I kind of like that. You know, the only other thing I have for you, and I guess it's going to be entied in with Greysdale, is that with my conversation with Mr. McClure, because we have spoken, you know, because I have a lot of concerns, is that you've taken all your people out and spread them out. And I'm quite proud of the approach you folks are using and how we're going to move forward with this because this is not going to be a walk in the park. This is going to be a real pain in our horse.
Yep.
So we need to prepare ourselves and everybody need to be patient with what's going on. And I wish you the best luck in anything that I can do within my capable hands. I'm going to be able to help you out.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I got to, I want to ask you a question. I guess my certifications have run out. I don't think I'm allowed to be case.
Clearances have expired.
I could be wrong, I don't know.
We're not allowing anybody over 60 to help.
I'm going in 911.
What did you say?
Because we have.
Nobody over 60 is babysitting. For your safety.
No, because of the supervised visits, and you just mentioned this, and I just want to, are you, do you have some extra, like, housekeeping staff over there? Because, you know, I know you have to have certain court-ordered visits and people come in and out. And between those, you're probably going to make sure the rooms are cleaned.
I actually was walking downstairs today delivering some snacks that I picked up at the store yesterday for the few kids who are coming tomorrow. And I walked by one of our case aides and the, one of our janitorial staff and they, they were cleaning all of, every piece of furniture and item in the visit room. And I thanked them and she said, we're on our last room. So we're actually keeping folks out of the visit rooms unless there is a visit, which there should be very, 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 very few. And really trying to focus on one conference room so that we can clean multiple times throughout the day.
Well, and this is a change for our janitorial staff too. Because, I mean, you know, they can come in and clean, but now there's a lot of pressure we're putting on them to do.
There is, there's at least a lot fewer people in the building to make that a little bit easier. But you're correct.
Okay, now, I know we have Dawn here and we have Ms. Kusar, yes?
Just one other thing for Ms. McClure for future references. If we want to look at something, there is a gun that is, that you can use that sprays electrostatic cleaner that you can spray on surfaces that you don't have to spend as much time wiping down, that you might want to look at, you know, grabbing later if you can get your hands on one. Because I can tell you right now, they're probably not available. We've used them in the past.
We'll look into that, sir.
All right?
Okay, so what we're going to be doing now is, I'm sure there's some questions. Two of our most vulnerable and frankly, the things like Mr. McClure was saying, we can't really close down and we got a lot of people, is Greysdale in the prison. And at the same time, we, you know, I encourage, ask whatever questions you want. But keep in mind, we are dealing with public confidence too. And I would hate to, if they say, well, at this time, I don't feel I can comment on this right now, I think we have to respect that because we can go individually, you have every right as a councilperson, and talk to the executive or talk to one of the staff. But, I mean, in general, if you have some questions, that's fine.
Well, and thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Heckman. It's important because we are following the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidance. And the Pennsylvania Department of Health is leading the response to COVID-19 in North Hampton County. And I can't tell you what a great job they're doing to this point and how grateful I am that they are. We're very fortunate. But their guidance is not to give any identifying characteristics to anyone who's been diagnosed. And I have been religious in not identifying anyone, their municipality. I am not giving any identifying information. People who work for North Hampton County are being instructed not to give any identifying information. So if councilperson asks a question and, say, Dawn says, well, I can't tell you that, or I told her she couldn't, it's my fault.
I understand. I mean, it's, I get it and I think that, so, I mean, yeah, there might be some general questions.
Thank you for bringing that up.
No, no problem. Okay, thank you, Dawn. And some of these men are crossing over to the prison too. But let's start with Greysdale. And if, does somebody have a question, or Dawn, do you want to say anything or you just want to field questions?
I am, I'm going to read to you what we're doing and then I'll field any questions.
That would be fine. That's fine with me, go right ahead.
So we are working closely with EMS, Department of Health, you know, the county executive, the medical director. We have a very cohesive group and we are on calls every day, as Todd said, I think he left. But we are on the same calls and we're on a few more because we're long-term. So we are on numerous calls. We have Coalition, we have HAP, which is the Hospital, the Hospital Association of Pennsylvania, you know, CDC. So there's quite a few calls that we're on every day, numerous, numerous days, numerous calls. We are restricting and screening all vendors and visitors from coming in. Volunteers, we've stopped volunteers. The only visitors that we are allowing in at this time is if the resident enters into a compassionate-type situation, maybe end of life. That's the only residents, visitors that we're allowing in. So I wanted to be clear about that. But you know what? The residents, we have a resident council, we have a great group of residents. They are very receptive. We had this resident council, we explained that, and Jennifer Stewart-King, our administrator, was there. She, you know, reached out to numerous residents and they were, they were really understanding of it. So I thought that was good. Supplies, we are, we are being very diligent about our supplies. Our supervisors are monitoring them, keeping them almost under lock and key. We divvy them out as needed. So as Mr. McClure said, if there is anything that we can do to get supplies, PPE gear especially, that would be wonderful. Because we're so large of a facility and we have 688 residents or the capacity, we can go through hundreds of masks and gowns a day, hundreds. So that's something that we are very concerned about and we are monitoring that. We are also monitoring staff assignments and contact tracing. You know, if something should happen at Greysdale, we are already starting to say, you know, which staff went here, which staff went there. We are trying to isolate staff as much as possible on the units that we can. We're doing that to the best of our ability. So, you know, again, that was a recommendation by CDC and, you know, we're trying, we're trying to do that. Our Tower 10, which is the top floor of the towers, that's going to be our isolation unit. As Mr. McClure said, we already have the decontents. We have a three-stage decontent up on the one side. I was going to say the red side, but on the one half of the unit. And then on the other half, we are ready and probably, I think, next week, the other side of that half of the unit will be ready. So we will have 24 beds. We have 12 now, 24 ready to go by the middle of next week. If needed, we can clear out the other residents that are on the other side of that unit and we can have 48 beds totally ready. So that is something that we are also ready to go with. We have a lot of teamwork. And as you said, or somebody said about the collective bargaining, we are working very closely with not only our team members, our different departments, but we're also working closely with the unions and keeping them abreast of things so nothing is surprising if we have to move staff certain places. So we are working very good. We have a great working relationship with them. And I just, you know, I thought that might be important to let everybody know because I do feel like we need to keep that relationship open. We have increased cleaning throughout the house. We have all the necessary cleaning equipment. So that, in that respect, we are good with. The staff, unfortunately, we cannot work from home, although we'd like to, just saying. We are reminding the staff to be very diligent about their hand washing, making sure that, and I know this is, every one of you tonight have done this, I'm just letting you know, you've touched your face. You're not supposed to be able to touch your face. It is very hard to do. So we're kind of reminding each other of that when we're going, when we're going through the units. Again, hand washing is key. We are now taking temperatures of every staff member as soon as they walk in the door. So we have a process for that, whatever shift you're on. And that's not just nursing, that's everybody, every department. We are monitoring everyone's temperature. If for some reason a staff member feels that they're becoming ill and they start to have a temperature, we have a process in place for that as well. So we are monitoring it very, very closely. We take that very seriously because, of course, our residents are there and they're vulnerable. So we are enhancing communication. I send out, either myself or Jennifer Stewart-King, our administrator, she sends out an email every day. I think it's important that they hear these words, that everybody's very anxious over there. As you can imagine, there are, there are some things that we're trying to communicate with them, even if they hear it the same day, you know. And because it's such a big facility, rumors go from one thing up to something else. So we are communicating as much as we can. And when the folks come down, you know, some people are just like, oh my God, that just happened. We quell those fears because it's not true. And then hopefully, they go back and tell people. But I think the daily email minimum does help. We're educating the staff on items like how long does this live on surfaces? You know, being diligent on cleaning shared equipment such as hoyer lifts or telephones. I mean, basic, basic things on the units. We're reminding them to wear their PPE when appropriate and to wear it appropriately. You know, we don't want anybody to rush into something and just throw something on. We want to make sure that's good. We have enough food and supplies should we need the employees to stay, which we are not at that point yet, but should we need that to be done. And also on our isolation unit on that Tower 10, we are going to be supplying the meals for the staff that's on that isolation part. So that's one thing that'll be almost like a little perk to, you know, to take that. That's going to be a rough assignment, you know, dawning and doffing to go in and to go out of those tents. So, you know, anything that we can do to make it a little bit easier for them. We are also not forcing anybody on that unit to have to take that assignment. We're rearranging staff so that everybody on that unit will be the same people from now until, you know, whenever this ends. So we are rearranging staff from different units just to make sure whoever's on that unit wants to be there and is able to, you know, some people might have a lung condition and they don't think they'll be able to do that. We'll move them off that unit just for this period of time. For the residents, what we're doing now is we are obtaining a full set of vital signs on them every day, every AM shift. We are also taking their temperature every evening shift and every night shift. So we weren't doing the vital signs up until today, so we started to do that today. And I think that's going to be important. Because there's a lot of residents, it's going to take some time to do that, but I really think that's the best thing to do at this point. We're also educating the residents on the signs and symptoms. We're, we want to get that out there so that they don't have the fear. They hear it on the TV, they hear everything shutting down, but we're not shutting down. So we're trying to educate them as well. We have a hand washing test machine that, you know, you wash your hands and you go over and there's a blue light. We're going to start doing that with some of the residents just to kind of incorporate them into some of the practices we're putting in place. We are, we have extra phones, we have extra tablets, again, like Mr. McClure said, so that, that communication is key. You know, so we need to make sure that they, that they still, that they still are having some type of communication with their family. They're also still receiving their meal, their meals, I mean, mail, because that's important. You know, some people are like, oh, you know, can I send a letter? Yes, you can. We do what we need to do with the mail, but they always get it. So what questions can I answer?
Oh, okay, well, again, I mean, in general, questions are, you know, I mean, I'm sure, I have some questions too, but they might be answered. So who wants to go first? Does Vargo have?
One, two, simple. First of all, thank you. It sounds so thorough and well-thought and I appreciate everything you're doing. It sounds so thorough and well thought and I appreciate everything you're doing. If there's anything we could do for your staff that we're allowed to send in for them, let us know.
Thank you.
My question is not necessarily specifics, but process in terms of interface with the hospital and not just if they're in quarantine and they need more services, but also regular health concerns that these clients have. So will you be transporting back and forth to hospitals or will everybody be in stay put and just treating where they are?
We will send the folks out that need to be sent out, that have, you know, certain issues or certain criteria, and they will be sent out. So that's not stopping. We are looking at things more diligently, certain signs and symptoms. And other than that, we're, we're looking at not just one thing. We're not just, oh, you got a temp, you go out. We're, we're, we're looking at the whole picture. So yes, we, we are still sending them out if needed. And we're working very closely with Dr. Van Wueren and Dr. Holmser. So, you know, they're on board and they're kind of providing their guidance as well.
And is the short-term rehab sort of slowed down or on pause?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any, Mr. Myers?
Couple of questions. First of all, we get anybody to the point where you're in these respirators, we ship them right to the hospital, correct? Okay. This is a, I don't know quite how to ask this question. Those staff members that might be carrying children, are we separating them at any point? Put them at a lower level? Pregnant women?
Yeah, there's, no, I, I understand. There's no lower level per se?
Yeah. So we're not going to put, if we fill somebody's?
If they would like to, I mean, they, we can work with them. But there's, there's no lower level to, to put them at. Everybody cares for the residents.
Yep, I, I saw that. That's the only question I was, that's the only thing I have. And the only other one, because you're asking for the same thing. Is there anything we can do in a form of a letter, resolution, or any way that we can put heat on Mr. McClure to help you get PPE stuff? Is there anything we as the council can do to Mr. McClure? Is there anything you need from us to, to be able to put more pressure on, get these people protective equipment?
Letters.
Letters, phone calls, what, you know, what can we do?
Yeah, I think you pass a resolution and you send it to them. And then they'll get it and they'll treat it like every other resolution. Then you all call them.
Okay.
And email them and follow up. I've been in touch with Senator Casey on this issue. I've been in touch with Senator Toomey's office. I've been in touch with Senator Bob Scollet. Would be great if we called our local, if we all picked up the phone tomorrow, called our local reps and said, hey, we need the PPE in the Lehigh Valley and in Northampton County specifically.
So can we make that resolution tonight happen?
Yeah.
Well, you can. I mean, or you can just call them up and tell them what you want.
Yeah.
Or we could just?
I mean, we don't have to, we, we don't have to, but, I mean, we can call. We don't have to vote on anything.
Of course we can.
Well, no, I'm, I don't. We can do a resolution as we're sitting here now. But I would ask them, what, what do you want to, I mean, we're going to take a half an hour to put together a resolution saying we need all this stuff? I mean, I would rather just call them and say, you know what, this, we need this stuff.
Okay.
I mean, you know what? And also, by the way, we can send a letter. We can send a letter that we all are, are agreed to. And it doesn't take any action up here or trying to get it jotted down. And then we could, I can make sure it gets sent to every person in the chain through, through her. The Northampton County Council wished that I'd send this, has asked that I send this letter to you. Boom, 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 boom.
Okay, so the reason why I'm asking this is just to have the kind of language so that we understand what it is that we're asking for. Am I supposed to just call and say, hey, we need more PPE? Like Lamont said, we need, what is it, N-95?
Yes.
Got it. Is there anything else? Can we put that into, that's all I'm asking. Can you put that into a level?
B-100?
Yeah, B-100, but also just the regular masks, the isolation gowns. I'm sure I can work with Todd and, and get you, you know, a, a little bullet point if that'll help.
I think the problem is, they know what we need. I guess this is where I'm coming from. They know exactly what we need at a nursing home. So it's not like you have to give them a menu. It's that they have to move and figure out how to get this stuff to us. I mean, they don't need us to tell them, we, you, we need A, B, and C. They, they, if they're any competent, I'd vote them all out then. I mean, or their bureaucracy, they've got to know, the Department of Health, that we need personal protective equipment. I mean, we have one of the largest nursing homes in this state. So, I mean, we can give them a list. I'm, I'm not knocking that at all. I'm just saying sometimes we're doing things and I, I want to have a realistic expectation on it. Because, just because it takes on the official imprimatur of a resolution. And Mr. McClure started by saying, we know what they do with that. I mean, it's the phone calls, it's the personal contacts that I think make more of a difference.
Also, Mr. Heckman, you've probably done this too in the past. I used to write letters as a councilman.
I wrote letters as a councilman.
Without, you know, everybody else on the letter.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can flood them with letters.
The important point here is bearing witness, letting them know you know that if
But they don't have it.
If we have, if we have 24 COVID-19s at Greysdale, we'll be out of our stuff in a week.
Got it.
God forbid.
We are in desperate need at the nursing home for?
We have the largest, what you say is, we have the largest nursing home under one roof in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And we will be out of PPE in one week and that is not hyperbole.
My, my point with, yes, with that is this, okay? And, and I think it's awfully important. We get constant, we get emails all the time. Let's put an email with contact numbers and it's up to us to do our job. So can we do that? Can we have that done, sent to each one of us with our contacts who are state representatives? And then we can make our phone calls and send emails from there? If that's possible, is that possible, Linda?
Yeah, she can send that.
Can, I'm, I'm just asking for that. I want to make sure we had, because, you know, I got two numbers.
She can send that out and, and frankly, you know, I agree. I mean, you can send a letter, follow up with a phone call.
Email.
Followed up with phone calls. I get the staff. And, or sometimes I'll say a so-and-so in the office. I'll say, well, yeah, they're busy. And I'll say, well, are they too busy to take a phone call from me? And that's a little pushy, but sometimes I've done that. And sometimes they get on and sometimes they don't. But I mean, you know, it's.
Mr. Myers, you can also look on the webpage and just look under PA legislators and for your county, and they'll give them all, the addresses, the contact numbers and everything.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lott.
Real quick, one thing that has changed is the governor shut down more things today. He shut down construction. I did call the largest drywall contractor in the valley yesterday. And his answer was, Kevin, I can't buy them. What am I going to give my guys? You know, but now construction shut down. I don't know how much you're going to get out of construction, but I'm just putting it out there. I can't, they may still not want to give them up because they, they probably don't want to not stop working. But that changed, so maybe there might be an avenue there.
Any other questions? I, I wanted to ask you, based on what you said, Dawn. You said they're taking their temperature. Are we going now by the, because you're hearing from the Department of Public Health or the CDC?
CDC official definition of a temperature is 100.4, 1-0-0.4.
So if somebody comes in with a 100.0, I mean, you're sort of being, you're, you're going to use discretion with how they feel and what's going on.
Absolutely, we monitor them. But we don't just take one, one item. We, we look at the whole picture.
But if they do have that temperature, then that's probably a big red flag.
We monitor them.
Yeah, okay.
But they said with the elderly today though, on the Department of Health report, 99.6. So for the residents, is that?
We're going to CDC, we're going by CDC. Mm-hmm, 100.4. You know, you got, some of these residents are, are like cold, so they always have blankets on them. You know, and just because someone has a fever doesn't mean they have the COVID. You know, they could have sepsis, they could have a UTI. So there's other reasons. So we don't want to jump and panic. We want to make sure that we're, we're watching them and we're doing our due diligence, but we're not panicking or instilling fear in the residents or the staff.
Well, with so many voices out there, everywhere, you're following CDC guidelines.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's the best you can do. And, yeah, I, I'm glad, you know, you know what you have to do. But, I mean, we've had, and I know with the prison, in the past, I mean, this is because this is a big unknown. We have had flus that have gone through and you have a vulnerable population or a tight population. We've had other things happen.
Right.
And I, you know, this is major concern, but you do have protocol that you've had. And we're just going to have to make it as tight of the protocol and tighten it up and follow whatever recommendations we get. But we do know you need of, anything that you need, your first staff, we've got to ask that you get this. The other thing I wanted to ask you is, are we, is, what's the status with temporary workers as we go forward? In other words?
Agency?
Yeah, like, let's, let's say as a situation evolves, are temporary workers, is that pool still out there or?
We continue to use agency workers. What we're doing differently from then than we're doing with our own staff is they have to fill out a screening form every day. Every day they come in, they have to answer the same four questions. Every day they get their temperature taken and we're monitoring them as well.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, you know, you're adapting as best you can to the evolving situation. And we'll wish you the best and we will endeavor to do whatever we can in our positions to help you fulfill the responsibilities you have.
Much appreciated.
Any other questions for Dawn as we're?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dawn. And thank you, Sue.
No problem.
Last, but certainly not least, I got a communique from Mr. Kraft thanking me for mentioning his name. He still hungers for that fame. But anyway, so here we are. You have one of the biggest situations and that's always been the case. And I know over at the, the prison, I don't know if it's any better or worse than in the past because of the tightness of, of staff and visitors. But I mean, I would say the same thing when it goes to the prison. We, he's going to only be able to give us what information he can. So do you want to say anything upfront?
Well, it's very, good evening, first of all. It's very tough to follow all these speakers. Pretty good. It's, um, it's very trying at the prison right now. I think the one thing that we always look for is information. And the most important thing about the information is how we use it and how we pass it. I call it 25/7. We're 25/7 there. And we have three different shifts. So it's very important to pass on the information and get it correct. And to do that, we're constantly monitoring our, our information. We have roll call notes. So information and knowledge and keeping the team calm and keeping them functioning because that distancing is very difficult in a prison. Sir?
Not to be rude, I have no idea who you are.
I apologize.
My fault. I had everybody and I forgot.
Last time I was up here, you reminded me the same thing. Jim Kostor, Department of Corrections. Thank you, sir.
All right, so is that all you, you had right now? Or do you want to say anything more before I open it up?
No, because pretty much Ms. Dawn took a bunch of my lines. So it's, that's very difficult, but we follow suit. We have, we're in care of personnel. So we have the same.
And you have similar concerns and also you have some unique challenges at the prison. I mean, you, maybe in some ways more so than the nursing home. You can't control your in and out. I mean, you've got guys that are going to be leaving, they're going out and you've got people coming in. And it's not like you can say, I know the courts have sort of said, we're, and the state is saying we're going to, but you've got to sort of deal with what, what, what happens outside of your jurisdiction.
That is correct, that the personnel coming in and going, leaving and entering the institution. I think you brought that up before, I, I heard that earlier. We also do the scanners and we scan all our officers coming in.
And what about, and prisoners coming in?
All our staff, all the residents. The residents coming in and out. Call them clients, they're our.
Oh, not clients.
They're our, they're our, they're our personnel that we take care of. No, I, I understand.
I know, I'm sorry, whatever that term is today.
No, but we, we have them coming in and out. So we do inspect them, we do scan them. And we have their, we have thermometers there at all the entrances and exits. And if you go out and you come back in, you have to be scanned again. And all our officers are scanned before the shift and their roll call. And we, we do the same thing. We have some personnel that we're splitting into different shifts, not to clog up the offices for our staff that are, their office, such as our clerical. But the officers are down in trenches and the lieutenants. So they are out there and a lot of the, some of the residents coming in, we're, their immune system, they're vulnerable. So it's, it's very difficult, but we're on top of it and that's where we have to be right now.
Okay, questions, Ms. Vargo Hefner?
I have, I think, three. Work release canceled?
Right now, work release, okay, work release is canceled right now. And I'm looking to talk to the courts right now about that down the road with our work release program. I'm waiting for some responses back. So respectfully, I can't answer some of that till I, I get the information.
I just assumed if there's no work, you can't go, but?
Correct, and that's correct.
But if those programs were also put on just suspension or?
The programs were, we, we put them on hold right now. And there was three programs that we just put on hold. So that was the only three we had going on in the institution at the time. We're trying to still maintain a regular, a fluid movement as, as much as we can within Title 37, for example, recreation. We try to get them moving. Chow, for now, we can do that. We're not in any isolation right now. So we're trying to run normally inside without some of the programs.
And then the other question, maybe could be combined into two things, but they explained that their chain of command is Department of Health, CDC. That what's, do you have a collaboration of other folks that are running county operations that are collaborating on how you're handling things and what you're doing? Are you just tied into the same system as everyone else?
We're tied into every, everything, everybody else. And we go to some of the same meetings that we actually go to or we're on conference calls, so they're there. So we do a lot with the State Department of Corrections. We listen to our, you know, the counties, surrounding counties. We pick up information from them and it's all the same right now, so.
And has Prime Care added any additional staff? Or are they taking any other leadership in this? Because you have some designated Prime Care staff, but have they added?
Correct. I do not believe they've added any, but we've added them in different positions to help us out for, for testing when our folks come in the door. So they're also, if we do have a temperature or reading and we have somebody sit at the side and we test them again, we have a protocol for that, then we'll call Prime Care down. And they, they do assist us. So I'm happy, we're all making some different arrangements and changes. The officers are helping out greatly and that's a plus when you have your team behind you. So everybody's taken this concern. We're doing very well. We're educating our residents on the tier, as you said, the washing, cleanliness, doorknobs. That's what we do up there. So we're educating the residents themselves inside the unit.
Thank you.
And I would say within that contract with Prime Care, I think if there was a problem and there's flexibility in that the executive asked them because we need maybe A, B, or C, that, that we would be, they would give us extra.
At this time, at this time.
If we needed.
Right. At this time, we're.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Right.
Any, any questions? You have a question?
No. It was about work releases.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, how's it, the residents, they're coming in and going, as I said, are you, because people, guys will come in, or gals, residents, and they will have stories. Because we just talked about stories. How, how is it working with the staff and the population? I mean, is, is it a little bit more tense or is everybody sort of okay?
Well, rumor, like I said, the, the information being passed out and being consistent, that's what it is. That's what it is. It's, it's rumor. And you need to stop that right away. I think actually Ms. Don brought that up. You need to stop the rumor and all the information going out, the bad information. Need to put out the information that's proven, the information that's working, and, and that's what we have to be consistent in.
So you're continually, not just with staff, but you're continually communicating with the residents and letting them know, hey, this is the situation out there.
We also have postings from the state has actually given us postings. So we actually do postings on the, and we, they have meetings up inside the units...
Yes.
About cleanliness. So we'll have our administrators go inside the units. The officers have team meetings inside the units. They speak to the residents, they talk about cleanliness. And that seems, that's, you said soap and water? That's the main thing. Soap and water. That's the main thing.
It's like a lost start. Any, anyway, any other questions?
Not for him.
Not for him? Oh, Jesus.
I have, I just have one question for Mr. McClure.
Well, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You had a question for Mr. McClure?
Yeah, just, or, in general, we've heard from everybody else. Only person, department, we haven't heard from, and, and how are our Sheriff's Department, how are they handling their situations? Because I know they're out doing things, and I, I, I have concerns for those fellows, even though that guy back there, back there, he's not that important. He just coaches freedom.
That, that, that is an excellent point. And it is my fault that Sheriff Johnson isn't here tonight. I didn't think to bring him here because I didn't think that it was salient with respect to your consideration of the declaration. My apologies.
Well, it's not Mr. Durtinger's fault. He should have thought of that and told you.
That's okay. He's, he's responsible for lunch.
Mr. Durtinger has his own issues.
Long standing.
This is, this is my, this is my fault.
Okay.
But they're, they're fine.
Okay.
You know, there's a great deal of praise to go around with respect to our workforce. And certainly, the Sheriff's Department, the leadership there and, and the deputies deserve a great deal of credit because they help us maintain calm. They help us maintain order. They, they help us maintain, I dare say, discipline. So without them, we wouldn't be able to balance this.
No, just kidding.
Hey, Sergeant.
Do you have something?
Yeah, no.
Oh, okay.
They help us balance the, the difficult task of the contin, continuity of operations with social distancing. They're, they're right there in the middle of it. But it's my fault. I apologize.
And they're not going out serving warrants or anything like that right now, right?
Uh, they are. They're still doing their job.
Good. Using, I hope they're being...
They're, they're, they're taking care of themselves.
That's pretty much all I got.
Good.
Now, thank, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This report, so while we, we've had a tremendous amount of information given to us...
We have.
And we now have the resolution in front of us. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce this resolution? I'm looking in this direction. Why don't you just read the two first wherethes?
And then the...
And I would say then you could read the, the, the further, still further...
Okay.
...resolved.
Whereas on March 16th, 2020, County Executive Lamont G. McClure issued the below Declaration of Disaster Emergency for the Preservation of the Health, Safety, and Welfare of the People of Northampton County. And whereas by the adoption of this resolution, the declaration will remain in force and effect for 30 days, at which time the County Executive McClure will reevaluate whether it needs to continue. Further, I direct Northampton County Emergency Management Coordinator to coordinate the activities of the emergency response, to take all appropriate action needed to alleviate the effects of this disaster, to aid in the restoration of essential public services, and to take any other emergency response action deemed necessary to respond to this emergency. Still further, I authorize officials of Northampton County to act as necessary to meet the current exigencies of this emergency, namely by the employment of temporary workers, by the rental of equipment, by the purchase of supplies and materials, and by entering into such contracts and agreements for the performance of public work as may be required to meet the emergency, all without regard to those time-consuming procedures and formalities normally prescribed by law, mandatory constitutional requirements accepted. This declaration shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion.
No. We did it.
Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you.
Great.
Is there any other new business by members of council?
Yes.
Mr. Lott?
Yeah, I just want to address, we got our YouTube up and running.
Yes.
Works great.
Yes.
I mean, I, I called in, I was out of the, I was in two major airports on Sunday, and I really wanted to call in out of respect for the situation and everybody here.
Yes.
I feel fine, I don't have a temperature, but, but just playing it safe. I wanted to call in. I called in last night. The YouTube's great. You can hear everybody talk, even when they forget to put the mic on. I mean, the YouTube is excellent. The problem is, there's a minute delay. So you can't listen to that. Now, when you call in our system, you get about, you lose about a third of the conversations.
You're right.
And I've talked to a couple other, other, other members of council, and they had the same experience. I never complained much about it before because I kind of thought it was our duty to be here, and when I'm on vacation, I, I call in, but, so I, I miss some of it and I can watch the program. But you can't use YouTube to participate in this meeting because you can't get your voting, you can't get your comment in. We need, and this, you know, if it's Kevin Law on vacation, so be it. But now it kind of, it kind of shows us, we need good, good equipment here, because we actually may need to be able to call in and listen and understand what the meeting's about. When you miss a third of the conversations, you're not getting a good, you know, you've got to watch it later, and then you're not doing your job as a councilperson. We need good equipment here. I worked in, in the field, I never had a problem in, in business when we did a conference call. I think, watching how wonderful YouTube is, I think we can, we should get a system that we can understand and hear the people talking when we have to call in. That's all I got, Mr. President.
No, it's, I, questions have come up about Skype. A lot of questions have come up, and I, I agree with you. And Mr. Tom, he's, he's talking to our IT people, and we are going to press hard as we go forward.